Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Okay, now you can hear me.
Now I can hear you.
Are we all back?
We're waiting for City Attorney, and he is connecting now.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, the lovely hat.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Holidays.
You sure are bringing new life for Christmas for us. Love the style.
I look forward to when we can all be in the same room at the same time, and we can all have such a great time.
I agree. I agree. Let me know when we're all back, Paul.
We are all back.
Okay, perfect. This time, we're going to resume the meeting of December 20th, 2021. Councilmember Burns, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Resendez.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Present.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Mayor Velasquez.
Here.
Police Chief Reynoso.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Epperson.
Here.
The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council regular meeting of December 2021 was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on December 15, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. per Government Code Section 54954.2.
Thank you. City Attorney, will you please report out closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report that the City Council discussed in closed session, that item agendized for closed session discussion, which I read into the record before the City Council moved into closed session, direction was given to staff, and the City Council recessed from closed session at 6:41 p.m. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to now move to the consent agenda. Are there any items Council would like to pull? Do we have any from the public?
There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Remember the audience?
Yeah, this was just if you want to pull anything off of the consent agenda, there's three items.
You can speak on the public comment, it sounds like. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion? Does the motion, is there a second? Motion and a second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez.
Yes.
And carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to now move to Item C, Public Input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby, are to be completed, and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you are joining us by Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us by Zoom using cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker tonight?
Yes, we have a speaker on Zoom, John Robel. We will unmute you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I assume you can hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for allowing this to occur. I wanted to talk a little bit about the most recent meeting that we had with the Hollister 150 Committee as we worked through towards our July and August preparations for our big celebration in the City of Hollister. We spent a little bit of time beginning to break ourselves up into organizational groups for the various different weekends that we're planning on having activities. The first weekend, of course, being the Fourth of July and Motorcycle Rally, which the city has that under control lock, stock, and barrel, so the only thing, of course, that we'd like to see happen there is a little bit of naming with the Hollister 150 on that particular activity for that weekend. As it kicks off, the Hollister 150 celebration coming up in August. The second week, we're hoping to be able to have some activities downtown. We are working the Arts Council into that, and others who are interested in arts and crafts, kinds of arts and cultural kinds of activities. The third week, we're looking at a big street festival and after-party hosted by the Downtown Association. Fourth week will be the Parks and Recreation Fund Run, and that's an already planned event with additional events, hopefully, at the parks, maybe by folks such as Hollister Youth Alliance and others, which will really focus on trying to bring our community more together. The fifth week, we still have some opportunities to do some more things there. Our last meeting, we talked quite a bit about doing some things with the airport, the airport celebrating this year their 110th anniversary, and we're hoping that maybe we can do something with the pilots at the airport and maybe have some kind of a parade of aircraft over Hollister during the weekend of the airport celebration, and some other things will likely happen that weekend as well. And, of course, the sixth week, which would be the 6th of August, which is the actual date of the anniversary of the incorporation of the City of Hollister, they'll be at the big parade in a celebration ceremony, probably in front of Vets Hall, where we uncover a plaque and monument. Our next meeting will be the third Friday of January, which is, I think, the 21st. It'll be at 1:00 and probably at Vets Hall. I wanted to say thank you very much to everybody for putting up with me. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Next, we have John B.
All right, let's see how much I can get through with this. So my name's John B. I bought a house on Highland between Sunset and Vallejo in 91, and that's where the problem is. Not a problem at first. 2009, I got laid off, three years. Then I really noticed a big problem with speeding. There's a little church on the corner of Vallejo and a school, and they're not all of the problem, but they're most of it, and people go very, very fast on that street. Matter of fact, a few years ago, a kid got killed, so 2006, in front of my neighbor's house on a weekend, no school, but now people in that neighborhood, kids walk up and down to and from school, parents walk their kids, and it's an accident waiting to happen, a bad one. I moved back in October, and I noticed that there's speed bumps.
Oh, Mr. John, I'm sorry, Mr. B. We're actually speaking on that item tonight.
Okay.
So since it's on the agenda, we can't have that as a comment, a public comment, but you're welcome to make a comment when that item does. But you're welcome to make a comment when that item does come up. It should be coming up. Okay?
Perfect. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you. We'll now move to item D1, City Manager's Report.
Nothing to report at this time?
Thank you. Item D2, Trainings.
Yeah, I believe that City Court has a training to discuss.
Yes, this is Deputy City Clerk Nova Romero. And I just wanted to report that the City Clerk Christine Black and I attended the annual League of California Cities New Law and Elections Seminar. It was held December 8th through 10th. It went over several topics such as new laws that will be going into effect in 2022 that affect California cities. We also attended a session on Board and Commission Recruiting Processes, Language and Inclusivity, Media Engagement, Public Records Processing, and the FPPC update for filing officers. That's all.
Thank you. We will now move to item F.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this Chief Reynoso, I have that item before us is ordinance 1204. Ordinance of the City of Hollister adding Chapter 10.20.105 Vehicles and Traffic, restricting the parking vehicles that block a sidewalk. This ordinance was established, will establish a law against parking a vehicle on such a manner that is completely or partially blocks the sidewalk. The first reading and introduction of this ordinance was held on December 6, 2021. The recommendation of staff is to read by title only, wave full ordinance number 1204, the City of Hollister, adding Chapter 10.20.105 Vehicles and Traffic, restricting the parking of vehicles that block a sidewalk. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? I cannot see the council here. So is...
I have a question.
Go ahead. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, sir. I don't see any type of appeal process or administrative review process.
I think it would be an admin citation, so there is a process for appealing all admin citations. It would be the same one all the ordinances have.
Thank you. Chief, I do have a quick question for you. How are residents going to report this or just officers as they're driving around? I have noticed, obviously, you brought this for a reason. There are quite a few people that now view the sidewalk as a parking spot. How do we get the citizens to report it and make sure something happens quickly when they do report it? Are they going to contact the non-emergency number or what's your plan on that?
Yes, they can do both. We're going to be responsive to citizens who call us about the violation occurring and officers also upon seeing these violations. It's designed to be very quick and responsive. If it requires a citation, obviously, we'll be able to write a parking citation very quickly. And hopefully, with the time and the education that we hope to push out through social media, it'll be less occurrences of this happening so that our citizens could walk through the sidewalk without having to go around cars and into the roadway.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Perez.
So on section A over here, I was talking about all this that it's talking about. Does that also include, like, if there are parking obstruction, if they're too close to the corner of a stop sign, where they'll be able to be ticketed or...? Yes?
Yes, yes, sir. We've had vehicles that park right up to the stop sign and that's a violation in itself. But if they're blocking the ramp, per se, of the entrance of the sidewalk where someone in a wheelchair would need to have access or anyone just walking through there would be blocking their access, this specifically talks about that and would address that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have a speaker on Zoom, John Robel. You can go ahead.
Thank you. City Councilman Mayor Velazquez. As I live on San Benito Street, I've had to replace a minimum of five cars over the years I've lived here because people ran into them for various reasons and not because my cars were parked illegally. I'm kind of concerned about this ordinance because the folks on 4th Street, that's a relatively narrow street for the amount of traffic that's on that street. And many of those people tend to park their car kind of partially onto the strip between the sidewalk and the pavement. And I would really, ordinance, penalize those people who are trying to protect their property by helping to make that street just a little bit wider so that folks can, that excess traffic on that street doesn't impact their personal lives and their vehicles. I would really hope that there's enough flexibility in how this is going to work, that those folks who, they're not necessarily, excuse me, parking on the sidewalk, but their vehicles are partially off the street. And I really would hate to see those people be getting tickets while they're trying to protect their property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Anita Kane. You can go ahead, Anita. Anita, you can unmute yourself and speak.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Kane.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us? We can hear you.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Especially as it pertains to the stop signs and fire hydrants. I noticed in my neighborhood that there's folks that are kind of ignoring the regulated distances to be from stop signs and fire hydrants. But I wonder, before you start doing the big tickets and the towing, if the city could do some sort of a little public notice beforehand to give folks a heads up? So as a goodwill gesture before they start enforcing this, I think it's important but to stay on people's good sides and to keep them willing to go along with the regulations, I think. It'd be a good thing. Thank you for pursuing this because, especially with the fire hydrant thing, I think it's important to get people to go along with the laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers or hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns.
Go ahead, sir.
I think Chief Reynosa wanted to respond to one of the comments made, sir.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The comment in regards to the 4th Street parking, that's actually the Parkway or the Mo Strip as they're known, that's already a violation. And those residents on 4th Street have already been spoken to and they've stopped, for the most part, parking on that area. It's, there is a regulation for that and to allow one street to do it, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of the rest of the community. So I know that that street is a little bit more narrow, but there is a limit line that's been painted on most of 4th Street. And it just, we can't help that vehicles will crash into these vehicles. But if they're legally parked, there's plenty of room. People just need to slow down and, and what is happening most recently is also not drink and drive for those vehicles not to be hit. But it's already a violation to park on the parkways, as they're called, and that's been addressed already.
Thank you, sir. There is no other comments or questions? Is there...? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, do you have a comment? Is there a motion?
So moved. Mayor, I'd like to recommend approval, read by title only, wave full reading, and adopt ordinance number 1204 of the City of Hollister adopting Chapter 10.20.105 Vehicles and Traffic Restricting the Parking of Vehicles That Block a Sidewalk.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to now move to item F2.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our second reading for the, on December 6, 2021. We did a first reading in introduction to ordinance number 1205 Edible Food Recovery Ordinance. And that you read by title only, wave full reading, and adopt ordinance number 1205 Adding Edible Food Recovery Program Title 8, Health and Safety, Chapter 12.180 of the City's municipal code. I have Selena Stowe, if you have any questions on this item.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the council? Do we have any from the public?
There are no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Move to adopt.
Mayor, I have some questions, please.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Resendez.
That's okay. I didn't see you.
I understand. I actually have some real concerns about this. It appears to me that we absolutely have to do this and I understand that. But I would like a little bit of clarity. If you go to the item itself, specifically F2 on page 68, it talks about city responsibilities under number 5. And so it says, "City Lead in Resolving Issues Related to Complaints or Non-Compliance." I'd like to know a little bit more about what that really means. And then I have a couple more questions after that.
Can you state the number again? Number 5?
Yes, it was number 5 and I believe it was on page 68 of the council packet.
68. Does anyone have the council packet printed? I just have...
Yeah, well, I can, it says Assistant County on any related issues requiring jurisdictional assistance, enforcement, or lead in resolving issues related to complaints or non-compliance.
Sure.
Responsibilities.
Thank you. I believe that was requested to be placed into the ordinances with San Juan Batista because they wanted to have more ability to assist with enforcement actions. So with the county, when there is a business that is not compliant, we're able to work with them through that, support them. But in the case that it does come down to enforcement, we would look to the city for assistance and would not go and do that without the authorization from the city. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Burns.
So if I understand it correctly, this was a direct, the City of San Juan Batista wanting that language in their document?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember. I believe it was put in every ordinance or for the both cities. But if I remember correctly, yes, it was requested. And I think it would be a good idea to include that. So that way, it's not the county's code enforcement going on its own to enforce the requirements. It would be in partnership with the city.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would agree with Selena. It allows us, our code enforcement, you know, we can, we tend to do a lot more warnings and work with our businesses. So that would be a better way for us to, a softer approach, which we prefer, and then use the necessary tools if we have to.
Okay. Next question would be in regards to item number four. And it said, "Be Responsible for All Other Applicable Senate Bill 1383 Requirements Not Designated to the County." Do we know what those are or is that just a broad brush statement?
So with the edible food recovery ordinance, that is what is going to be required of the cities and the counties once we apply for the rural exemption. So now that you have signed that MOU that we brought to the City Council at the last meeting with the requested modification to add those specific responsibilities that are going to be required of the cities come January 1st, again, if we get the rural exemption. So the edible food recovery ordinance is what is required per SB 1383 at that time. But there are so many more requirements with SB 1383 that the city will be held responsible to unless we enter into another memorandum of understanding. So in the MOU, we identified the things that are required come January 1st per SB 1383 requirements, and that is the Cal Green Code requirements, the M Welo and recycled content paper procurement. So that is identified in the MOU that was approved by all three jurisdictions. But for the ordinance, this is, that's what's required come January 1st if we receive that exemption.
Okay. Again, I just want to state for the record, this seems pretty wide open to me and it just seems like there's really no clear parameters. I've heard what you said. I understand it. Makes me very uncomfortable when we talk in general language like this. Who is, it talks about in the ordinance, who is the enforcement officer? And where is the budget for this? How's that all going to work?
So right now, we are working with our local task force to determine if there's going to be any additional associated cost for the regional agency programming, which would potentially include the enforcement part of it. But it is based on a complaint-based system. So if there's no complaint, there would be no enforcement. And with the inspection process, it would be on integrated waste management staff to go out there and inspect the businesses on an annual basis. And at this time, we don't have very many businesses who are applicable. I think there's about five in Hollister that we have identified and we're hoping to narrow down and finalize that list by the end of the year. So I don't think there's going to be much staff time on the edible food recovery program. But if there is, we would bring that to our integrated local task force, which Rick Perez is a member of, and discuss the additional costs that we might incur into our next budget.
Do you anticipate a fee for the annual inspection?
I do not because we already have our franchise taller going out to many of these businesses and we would just be joining them on that site visit. And that's already part of the franchise agreement with Recology to inspect all of these businesses on an annual basis.
Has there been any discussion about fines on this and costs for fines?
There are fines established and I believe it's just the standard fine assessments that are already adopted in your code. And this is just to, for this ordinance, this is just to adopt a enforceable mechanism. But it won't go into effect until January 1st of 2024. So no businesses are going to be fined and this is very much an education-first approach. So we're having two years of education outreach over the next two years before we even consider fining or bringing that up. And we're hoping all businesses will be compliant by that date.
Okay. And I appreciate that approach very much. Mr. Miller, are you anticipating any additional funding expenses? At this time, I do recognize that it's really not scheduled to really roll into the enforcement piece until 2024.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything right now, but I mean, it's like a lot of state programs, unfunded mandated costs for us. So I always keep my eyes wide open.
And I appreciate that. I guess my final thought was, Mr. Miller, who would be responsible from the city? Are you talking about code enforcement and planning? Are you talking about enforcement through the police department or has it been discussed at this point?
It hasn't been discussed at this point, but with code being under PD, it would probably, it would be under the chief's direction.
Thank you. Chief Reynosa, any thoughts or comments?
Enforcement of this or seeking or dealing with the violations, I think it would be more along lines for code enforcement and having, that is something that we could possibly look into, especially with our CSO Level 2s that would be in place. That's something we can look into and I think we have plenty of time. If it's not going to be enforced until 2024, to look into that.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my questions. Thank you for your presentation. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from council? We are asked for speaker cards already, correct? I think now since we need a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Uh, I think you have to read this by title only, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm on the other one. I recommend that we read by title only, wait full reading and adopt ordinance number 1205, adding an edible food recovery program to Title 8 Health and Safety, Chapter 8.12.180 of the city of Hollister municipal code.
Thank you, sir. Motion is second. Is there a second?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to move now.
Oh, I was just saying, thank you.
Okay. We'll move now to item F3.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Renee Peralis, CIP Manager, Administrative Services Department. Uh, tonight before you is Resolution 2021-234, which will authorize staff to call for sealed bids for the 2021-22 road rehabilitation project, CIP C2101. The bond states will receive an overlay, gap line drive from Clearview to High Island, Diopco Drive, Clearview to High Island, Seminole Drive, Clearview to High Island.
Renee, Renee, I'm sorry, it's Paul. Um, your microphone is very bad.
Oh.
Try it again.
Try, try again, or you might have to come out and come back in.
All right. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes, and perfect.
Okay, I'll be quick. Tonight before you is Resolution 2021-234, authorizing staff to call for sealed bids for the 2021-22 road rehab project, CIP C2101. The plans are now complete for bidding purposes. Bids. Once bids are received and opened, staff will bring back a contract and an appropriation for council approval. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead. Who is that? Sorry, can't see.
Oh, it's Dolores. Thank you, sorry.
Dolores, go ahead. Ms. Morales?
And I apologize if this was covered in another meeting. Um, can you share with me how, or how these areas were selected? Like the prioritization, was there any evaluation or analysis in terms of the city needs and priorities based on certain criteria?
Um, yeah, we, the, the pavement program, um, that was prepared by Kim Lee Horn, and it was one of the areas that were, um, that was a, a good project. And I don't know if Mark wants to chime in on that, if he's there.
Good evening, Mark Falgo, acting city engineer. Uh, the last year, or earlier this year, we, we drove all the streets in, in the city of Hollister in order to establish pavement, uh, a pavement evaluation program that Renee mentioned. These streets were a good opportunity. They, they all were in need of, of grind and overlay, so a similar type of rehab for all of them. They're clustered in an area, and they're in a part of town that had not been in one of the previous three road rehab projects. So that's, that's how they were selected, based on the need for the streets to be done, the, the fact that they were clustered, and the fact that they were all going to receive the same type of treatment.
May I continue with the questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, would, did we consult with our community in terms of what they believe to be a priority based on their needs?
No.
Okay. Is, is that going to be considered at some point during the process, or is the process now complete?
Well, this particular project is, we're, we're, this is not the end of our road rehab program. This is just a project that is going through. Um, this project, we're requesting permission to bid, so this project would be complete. It would be, uh, bid. We would then, you know, hopefully award, uh, get a low bidder, award them and get the project done. In the meantime, we have not stopped looking at other streets that need, whether they need a, a slurry seal, a, a grind and overlay, or, or another type of treatment. So we are still working through the rest of the city, quite frankly, in, in order to, to develop the, the pavement program going forward.
If it's appropriate, would it be possible to see the, um, bigger picture in terms of what areas were previously identified, what other areas might, will, or might be considered? I'm looking at, um, just in driving through the community, there's some areas that just have significant, uh, needs for improvement and other areas that look like they've been paved and they're fairly new.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering how, um, you know, the evaluation criteria and the utilization rate, um, if all those were factored in. I also like to know, as you're putting in our for bid, in terms of the effectiveness, um, the methodology and the durability of the projects. So I'm, I'm not an expert in this area, but I do notice from, um, areas that were done, that the way that it was done wasn't durable. So in little time, I mean, the areas need additional work. So I'd like to see the, the quality of work being improved and actually embedded in, in the, in the bidding process, uh, so that we actually get quality work and actually, um, it lasts a very long time for the funds that we're going to be paying for them.
Yes, ma'am. And, and so for a grind and overlay project such as this, there will be, that what, this is one of the more aggressive pavement rehabilitations in terms of going in and actually fixing, you know, the surface alligatoring and all that sort of stuff. In addition, where, where, where it appears that, that there are base failures, where the rock underneath the pavement has given way, there are full digouts that, that would go in there and pull that out, put in new rock, recompact it, and then, and then do a full-depth paving over those. So it's one of the more aggressive road rehabilitation types of programs. We are going to be coming in with, with some Cape Steel projects on, on some roads that are not as bad, they're not as bad as, as these ones pavement-wise, so that we can extend the life on those for less money, quite frankly. Also, we have, you know, other roads that need to be grinded and overlaid, the same as these ones, that are in, that are in poor condition. Regarding the conditions, the, the pavement evaluation report is in the city's hands. Um, there, and I can certainly, I'm happy to, to point you to it or send you a copy. Um, and, and so that really, that tells the condition of every street in town, gives it a, gives it a PCI number, which is a, a pavement index, really, that, uh, from 1 to 100 ranks each street. And, uh, and so these streets were chosen because they were poor pavement condition, and, and it was, you know, it was, like I said, they were clustered. We're trying to, the, the more, the closer the streets are together, the more cost-effective it is, because the contractors aren't running all over town to try and mobilize and remain. And so that was, that, so, with the last few years, we've been hitting different sectors of town, and, uh, the program will be, uh, we're, we're looking at something even more intense going forward here as far as getting more streets covered.
It just, it's, um, helpful to see the bigger picture in the plan, even if it's down the road. I think then our community can at least anticipate that their area will be covered at some point in time, whether it's six months, or three years, or, or 25 years, but at least that there's a plan for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Do want to give a, a quick update, Ms. Morales. Uh, the, the, we've been working on for the past year now with Kim Lee Horn, it's really made a big difference in our, our planning for the roads. The, the work we'll be doing this year will pretty much cover 70, 80% of the city as far as repairs of the roads. Uh, they did the analysis. You can go online, they'll give you the link. It'll show you the conditions of each and every street, block by block, whether it's just, uh, a road that's in good condition, green, or down to the failure point, red, and it shows you kind of what the strategies will be. And what they're doing right now is, part of the problem in the past was, one street would be done in one area and then nothing else in that area. So it was very costly. And one of the other problems in the past was that the, a simple overlay, a slurry, done early enough, preserves that street for 10, 15 years. And what was happening is a lot of those weren't taken care of until they got to the point of failure. So the cost to do a slurry, obviously is much less than do a full reconstruct. So the strategy right now is to cluster, uh, streets throughout the city. As I said, uh, Kim Lee Horn now is working on to really address some of the worst streets in the city, and at the same time do overlays or slurries on some of those that are in need of it now. So it's a very good plan. I highly recommend you take a look at that link, and you'll see what, um, the plans are, what the conditions are. The good news is, our index came back at 74, which is considered, uh, good, good condition, but the goal is to get it up 85 plus, and we should be seeing most of that happen, and our alleys too. So Vice Mayor is going to be excited about that, but a lot of good stuff is happening, and I really do appreciate, uh, that we're finally moving on these projects. Any other questions or comments from council? Do we have any?
There are no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F4.
Renee Peralis again. Um, tonight, or now we have Resolution 2021-235 for Lad Lane and South Side Road Traffic Calming Project, CIP C2006. The plans have been revised to provide construction cost savings, and those plans are now complete for bidding purposes. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the call for sealed bids, and once again, um, once the bids are received and opened, staff will bring back a contract and appropriation for council approval. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Vice Mayor Perez, go ahead, sir.
Um, the, um, I don't know if this is one for Mark or for you, Renee. Um, so, right there, at Calvit and Lad Lane, they were putting in a roundabout, I guess. Are we, my, my questions are towards the materials that we're using. Are we going to use these rubber curbs again? My concern about that is, is just, um, I just, um, I don't like the aesthetic looks, how it looks in, in our city. I think it, it makes our city, uh, I just don't like the way it looks, and I was wondering if there's other options, um, because, just to see what's out there.
So we are proposing the rubber curbs. That's what's on the plan right now. Um, other options, one, one of the, one of the keys to the, the traffic calming stuff, the, uh, projects we've been doing around town is, is cost-effectiveness. And, um, the more traditional type of median, uh, where you'd have a, a cast-in-place curb is, you know, three to four times the cost of, of these rubber curbs. So the cost would, would go up significantly to do, uh, a different, to do a, a more, um, aesthetic, I would say, uh, and, and traditional type of curb. So these are going to be, well, we are proposed currently with rubber, rubber curbs.
Ouch. Okay.
Allison, did you raise your hand? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Morales.
Thank you. Um, so I, I have been receiving, um, communication from the residents of, of D3 in regards to, to Lad, so thank you for, for this project. I'm sure that, that it will be a relief to them. I know that they've been asking for several years. Um, two of the other things that I've heard from residents is the roundabout. It's not, uh, you know, several residents are very passionate about their dislike for them. Um, there was another area that I think it was taken down for whatever reason, maybe somebody hit it too many times. But, um, has there been thought again in consideration in terms of how the impact, um, that these measures actually take in their effectiveness?
Yeah, well, we are, one of our traffic engineers at Kim Lee Horn actually analyzed the, the, the street and provided these layouts for traffic calming measures. We've employed the, the many, the traffic circles, the many, um, traffic circles around other parts of town. Uh, there was one that may have been taken out on Siena G, and, and that was, it, there was, um, there wasn't a pavement for it, quite frankly, so, so it was removed. It was, it was a difficult, uh, turn. But we are putting, we are employing them elsewhere, and they are slowing traffic, and that's their, that's their purpose. Their purpose is to, is to, uh, force people to slow down as they go through these intersections, and, 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 and I think that they are pretty effective at that. Um, and, and, and to, just to, to reiterate that, that these have been evaluated, the layouts of these traffic calming options have been done, have been, uh, performed by, by our traffic engineers. The, um, and I also want to make sure that, that we're, that we're, you know, at intersections in particular, on, on Lad and South Side, the things that we heard about in some of these intersections is people in the middle of the night spinning donuts and, and, you know, other, other hot rod type, type of events in the, in the traffic circles. Occupying that space could help prevent that type of, uh, activity. So that's another thought behind for this particular project.
No, I'm, I'm very familiar with that area. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering, I've been to other, um, areas in which some of these measures, um, have been laid out, and many of the rubber bump, I'm not sure what they're called, but the rubber bumpers
Curbs.
are, thank you, are in the middle of the road because they're not stable enough. So oftentimes they're in the middle of the street, the bolts are in another area. Um, a prime example of that is, um,
Central.
Central, thank you. Centra, Central. You see, um, how maybe the implementation on write, or in, on paper, they look great, or the analysis might be fine, but in terms of how it's implemented and utilized within our community, has there been an evaluation after you've implemented a strategy in terms of its effectiveness and durability? Because that's a huge concern of mine.
Sorry. Yeah. The, um, the, the measure of effectiveness is really, has, has, has the speed slowed down? Is it safer to, for, for, not for, uh, is it a safer street from a speed standpoint? Um, so the, because the purpose is to slow down traffic. The, um, and I understand what you're saying about those curbs getting hit. On Central in particular, uh, there was a delay in finishing the project, and those curbs, those curbs in particular did not have the, an integrated reflective color in them, which we are specifying, um, on this project going, and going forward, we will make sure, to make them more visible at night. So the, the, out there on Central, the, the black curbs were in place without any other type of reflective delineator, um, behind them, as, as is now installed. And so folks had a hard time seeing them at night. Uh, the delineators did not get installed until the striping was done. And, and so, uh, the contractors gone through and brushed them all up. I drove it before, the, tonight before the meeting in, in the dark, and, uh, and they're much more visible now than they were before. So the thought behind, I, it's a visibility issue, I think, is part of it. So, so there's a couple of things. One is using the integrated color, the reflective color, so that they are more visible at night, period. End of story, end of that type of story. That's just needs to be done. Secondly, um, uh, there is a possibility that we could add more, you know, thermoplastic striping, like a white stripe that would, that would, uh, outline them so that they are a little bit more visible. That's another, another opportunity. And, um, I think that the one wild card that we can't really control is, is that the driving habits of folks need to, they need to get used to them, and they need, and the, and the, this whole thing is a, is a, is a, is an attempt to change behavior. And so that is, that's the wild card that could take a little bit more time.
No, very familiar with changing behavior. It's, it's when you get there and the, and the bumps are like in the middle of the road, and the, and the screws are another, in another area. And I'm wondering, like, who, who goes out there to fix that, to make sure that people are not actually being injured, or cars are not being impacted as a result of, because that is our responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
When those things are not done properly, or there's things in the middle of the road, that is, you know, you can talk about analysis, but that's part of that implementation and evaluation process. Who does that part?
The, well, the city's, city road crews are, they, they go out and they'll, the ones who are going to replace signs and delineators and, and look at the curbs and replace them if, as needed. So we do have, I, I've been in contact with them to make sure that, that we're getting things done. Like I said, I drove it tonight. I looked, I didn't see any that were out of place now, after the contractor's gone back through and fixed them, and the project is actually complete, and I think a little more visible. But the city does have staff in the Public Works Department that, that is responsible for going out there. And I have been every, I have at least once a week been driving Central to make sure that it, that it looks good, uh, and that, and that, um, that the curbs aren't, you know, like, like you're saying, getting knocked around all the time, and, and if there are, then what do we do to, to? And if there are, then what do we do to, to, to affect change, to, to still make it effective, but not, certainly, you know, we don't want to create something that's dangerous. That's the whole point. We're not, we don't want to create a dangerous situation, so.
Well, thank you for hearing my concerns.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perez, did you have another question?
Yeah, actually, I was looking farther down and I guess you guys are going to put bricks in the middle of the roundabouts?
Yeah, it'll be a lot like Siena Gua and Central.
Okay. Yeah, so actually, so I gotta, I'll, I'll save these other questions for when, for my G4, because it's not pertaining to this project. Okay. Yeah. That's it.
Good, thank you. Just to address some of the, the questions that were out there, I think, when we talk about these circles, traffic calming circles, I know a lot of times people say the roundabouts, these are not roundabouts in our city at this point. These are actually traffic calming circles with the sole purpose of slowing traffic. Sometimes, I remember when, when Central first got done, a resident contacted me and said, "We don't like this. It's making us have to go too slow." And so, well, this was the whole purpose of the traffic calming on Central because that was a speedway through Central. People are driving 50, 60 miles an hour without a hesitation, just risking the lives of, of the kids and families out there. So they have worked. Reminder that at the time we started working on Central, in the city, the city at the time was not allowing speed cushions. That is changing and that's going to, we're seeing a positive impact on that. The conversation about the roundabout or the traffic calming circle that was on Siena Gua, that one there, there was talk about, well, it's dangerous, cars are crashing right into it. I would remind people that there was a stop sign right there. And what was really happening is people were blowing the stop sign at full speed, probably drunk, smashing right through it. Very scary what has been going on. But the ineffect of the project that happened on Central was traffic has slowed down considerably. The lessons have been learned as far as making sure the contractor gets those bricks in there on the project as they're doing it. The delineators being put in at the same time, can see it, striping on the, the curve so they can see those because they were too dark and that was an issue as far as the specs on the plan. So all those improvements have been made to make sure that the future projects, every one, we learned something new and it's been very successful so far. So I do appreciate this project. And this project, for an example, is one of the starting points of the program to create protected bike lanes on many of the larger streets so our kids can get to school safely. If you look at these plans, you'll see there is a protected bike lane through most of the road there. Eventually, we create a ring around the city or through the city where our residents can actually safely bike to school, bike to downtown, feel safe. And that's what we're trying to get to. So it's exciting. And the best part of this new design is we actually saved several hundred thousand dollars compared to the last one. There's a big, big difference on the planning of this. And all it took was just to step back, look at some of the new tools we have. So I'm, I'm very excited about this project and looking forward to more of these, such as Buena Vista, that's going to be coming up soon with some of these new strategies. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'm sorry, guys, I can't see anything out there.
Second.
There's a motion, is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to now move to item F5.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Still Renee. Now I have Resolution 2021-236, which will authorize staff to call for sealed bids for the Fremont Way Rehabilitation Project, CIP C2102. These plans are also now complete for bidding purposes and staff recommends that the city council authorize the call for sealed bids. Once bids are received and opened, staff will bring back a contract and appropriation for council approval. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, seen none. Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. We'll go back to the council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F6.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very excited to bring this item forward. We worked with Caltrans to bring back a contract so that we can now start taking over the beautification of the Highway 25 bypass. The Caltrans will reimburse us up to $65,000 to perform this services. And this is just one of many, as we are working to clean up the many entrances into Hollister. So I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really a question. I just, I want to express my thanks to the city manager for moving this forward. This has certainly been one of my pet peeves and I hope that this opens the door to many other successful projects. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments?
Just for clarification, if I can.
Go ahead, sir.
So we're going to get $65,000 to clean up along 25, correct?
Correct.
Do you know, do we know about how many hours it's going to take a year for that?
No, but once we get on it, we're also working on additional grant for, for landscaping down that corridor. So that will help us also by putting in the landscaping and then that will allow us less maintenance to have to do once the landscaping is in.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
There are no speakers and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Do want to remind everyone, this first phase of this, this is about trash cleanup. It's not about landscape maintenance on this part. It took a long time to get Caltrans to agree to let us start maintaining this area. So I'm very excited. Thank you, city manager, for staying on and following through. And looking forward to hopefully getting that grant so we can begin the landscaping process on that area. So thank you again. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Good.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We're now going to move to item F7.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This agenda item is in regard to the adoption of Resolution 2021-238 to implement a city policy and procedure that would address speed cushions as a form of traffic, traffic calming measures. With the numerous speeding, vehicle speeding complaints that we've received through the city, the city would definitely benefit from having a policy that would potentially address some of the residents' concerns. Having a speed cushion policy would standardize the process, benefiting both the residents and the city alike. Staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution approving the city of Hollister speeds, speed cushion policy and procedure. And please let me know if you have any questions, concerns, or any feedback on the policy.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. I don't know that I really have questions, maybe. I, I've read the policy thoroughly. I, on, on my preliminary thoughts, I'm not supportive of it. I wonder if we're not making more out of this than we have to. And we've recently, during the past year, learned that about the flag issue. I guess I do have questions because one of the streets I've requested that the speed cushions be put on, and I believe they're going to, Mr. Miller, I think you can speak to this, is Beverly Drive. But if you, if you look at the policy, Beverly Drive really wouldn't be applicable because it doesn't directly impact any of the residents in front of the residences. Beverly Drive from Sunny Slope to Hillcrest, there are no residents, but yet it does appear to be a speedway. And I'm concerned about that. I understand that speed cushions aren't necessarily applicable or a best practice for Union Avenue, but I've also expressed some serious concerns from, from Airline Highway to where it's going to be extended. And the road does narrow down in, in size once it opens up and goes to Fairview with the new development out there. And so, but again, at least up into the new development, there's only like a block of residential that would be impacted by this. So I don't know how the policy would speak in regards to that. It really doesn't speak to specific requests from other departments, whether it be the police department, the fire department. Doesn't really speak to council member requests. I don't believe it speaks to safety factors. I had the opportunity to go out and sit on Highlands last week and observe through one of my constituents a complaint that I then forwarded to the chief of police and he's aware of it. And I know that speed cushions isn't necessarily the best and only option, but I am concerned that you might not get the two-thirds vote necessary. And sometimes we have to err on the side of caution and in some cases that will make our constituents or residents of our community upset. And I don't really see where it speaks to that. It doesn't really speak to any appeal fees. If somebody wants to appeal, they'll be in place. Doesn't really speak to school zones. And there is a 10-year remove policy that if you request that it's, they're removed that, as I read it, you couldn't install speed cushions for up to 10 years after, if I read that correctly. And so I don't know if I have questions. I just can't support it based on this. And so I won't, I won't put you on the spot. But I, I'm, I'm not supportive, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. If I can address some of those, there are some changes. We can implement any changes and include any information that you, as a council, would like to see in the policy. If there's anything that we need to add, we can definitely work with that. There is an appeal process. It's a 10-day appeal process and it's, it's based on, you know, they, anybody can appeal it whether, the way the process will be is a resident will, the request will come from a resident, right? From, from a neighborhood. And then engineering department will review and will look at, you know, the entire length of the segment, analyze it, and put together a proposal for city council to review. So if the city council agrees on that proposal, on the design that engineering has put together, then, you know, you, you all can approve it and then there's a 10-day appeal process after that. If other residents don't want it, they can definitely appeal it. Were you going to say something?
Oh, no, I, well, yes, I just wanted to thank you for your open-mindedness. I would say at best it needs some work, but again, I don't know that we've really shown a need for a policy in this regard. And sometimes we are our own worst enemies when it comes to these kind of things. Now, there may be information that has warranted the request for this. I'm just not privy to it. And so, again, I appreciate your open-mindedness to it. I'm not going to support it tonight, at least. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
Is it okay to ask? Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. I was, similar to Mr. Burns, I'm wondering, would you be able to share under what circumstances there would be a request for removal after there's been a petition to, to have the speed bumps put in place? And can you also talk about the impact that it has for residents in terms of their property value?
As far as the property value, I'm not familiar. I don't know if Mark would have any information on that. I'm not, I haven't looked at the property value and how the, the speed cushions would affect it. The, the owners, where the speed cushions would be installed would, you know, they, they would have to agree 100% on getting these installed. So they would have some sort of say as to where they want the speed cushions installed in front of their homes or not. Your other, your other question was?
Under what circumstances would some, would the city put in speed bumps and then have it appealed and then have them be removed?
I can't remember if there's a, a specific year limit where they have to be in place. But if somebody want them removed, then they would submit a request for that. The engineering department, similar to the approval, they would analyze that, or similar to the installation, I'm sorry. They would analyze the, the request to remove them and we would bring it to state council similarly. And, and you guys would be able to vote on it and decide whether they'd be removed or not.
Mayor Obama. Councilmember Morales, where it can happen is maybe a neighborhood feels like they, that the speed cushions are slowing down the response to emergency vehicles and maybe that, as a group, they want them removed. That's the only thing I could think of off the top of my head.
And, and again, it goes back to the evaluation of the request. So again, taking into consideration, like our police department, our fire, ambulances, specifically as Mr. Burns had mentioned, you have a process where you have, you know, petition, you get signatures, you put it in place. And then it's, where's that evaluation period before the city spends money and puts them in place and then to be, to be removed? So I guess I'm wondering, like, have we thought about that? Is that in, in the policy? I didn't see that in there or the process.
Maybe I can help a little bit. There is some traffic analysis that is a part of installing speed cushions. So first you need owners to, or property, residents and property owners to agree that, yeah, we'd like our traffic slower. So we're going to, we're going to submit the forms. There is a, there, and I don't recall exactly what section it's in, but the, but once you get through the, the initial petition part, the engineering analysis is we're going to collect some data on speeds and traffic volumes. There should be a minimum number of, of trips on that street. It can't be, you know, two trips a day and, and one of them's going, you know, too fast. There also needs to be a certain percentage of the vehicle trips need to be exceeding the speed limit. So that's the evaluation that, hey, yeah, traffic does need to be calmed on this street. And then should, so should it go through the whole process and, and, and speed cushions get installed, there's a one-year period where, where they will not be considered for removal per the policy, the way it's written right now. And that's just so that we're not out there installing, removing, installing, removing. And then, as was mentioned by Councilmember Burns, the, if, if they, if it is requested to be removed, petition to be removed, and it gets, going to go through the same, a similar evaluation, an engineering evaluation, very similar to, to the installation evaluation. Although, you know, we're going to go out there, we're going to take a look at, at the, the volumes and the speeds and see if it makes sense from an engineering perspective, analysis perspective. And if it does, then they, then they could be removed. Now, some of the things, some of the things you get with speed cushions are, if, you know, that they, there is additional noise for going, driving over them. You also hear engines, you know, because people will slow down, they'll go over the hump and then they'll speed up to get, you know, on the other side of it sometimes. And, and so you'll hear some more engine noise. There may be a, a property that sells and, and the new owner doesn't like them in front of his house or her house type of thing, you know. And so that's why neighborhood buying is really critical and, and at the beginning of these things. And, and that we don't want turnover to be the, the main cause of us going out, pulling them out or installing new, new trap, new cushions. We really want the analysis that you, I think you, you requested to be a key factor in that. Did, is there, was there another question that I could?
Vice Mayor Perez? Or did you have more questions? Councilmember Morales?
No. So, so the circumstance would be there's a new owner, they don't
No, so, so the circumstance would be there's a new owner, they don't like it. But any other circumstances? I mean, is this common? So we're trying to kind of figure out.
So this policy is, is a way for the citizens of Hollister to say, I want a speed cushion on my street because I feel like, like traffic's going too fast. This doesn't preclude council from saying, I think Beverly Drive needs speeds cushions. Go, go, like, go analyze it and give us some layouts. It doesn't preclude that part of it. It provides an avenue for citizens and, and for the city to process citizens' requests in a timely and, uh, and, um, and hopefully efficient manner and, and, and based, based on a procedure that, that can be published and, and folks know what they have to do. So that's really the purpose behind this. It doesn't really change what we're doing anyway. When, when we're, when council asks us to look at particular streets, we're still doing the analysis and, and that part of it. This just provides an avenue for, for our citizens to come in with.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Perez, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so basically a resident wants to get a speed table on their street. It's he asked, that person or their representative for that street comes and gets two-thirds of the property owner or the residents? The resident, residents?
I believe it's, the way it's written right now is property owners.
Okay, property owners. Um, and then, the, and so the only ones that can, and so then it stays for a year. Once it gets its two-thirds, or it comes to the council, we approve it. Then it stays for a year. And then, um, you know, the only ones that can actually really appeal that is, um, public, um, the police, fire, or, kind of residents appeal that also?
Yeah, so the, in the, in the removal procedure section, um, it can be initiated by a property owner.
Okay, so how many, if it takes two-thirds to get it in, how many does it take to get it out?
It's the same policy with removal as it is. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The, um, and for every, uh, speed hump, there's an analysis done, traffic study.
Yes.
And from my understanding, they're approximately $11,000?
No, the, the studies, so here's a good example we did. Um, and it's really more for stretch, like for, um, for Apricot and Promise. We did, uh, we did an analysis for those two streets combined because they were both asked for at the same time. City staff, uh, placed the, um, the tubes in the street to collect the speed and the volume data. Uh, so that was not a cost to us, other than staff time to go out and, and, you know, put them in and take them down. And then, uh, the analysis itself on, and, and layouts for where the speed cushions could go on both those streets, total of $3,000.
Okay.
So, if we're not, if we're not doing, um, some of these have come out of, uh, always stop controlled, you know, studies, and so that's a different type of study.
Oh, so like West and Monterey, those ones were different?
Yeah, the Powell and West, those started off as always stop controls. And then we found that that wasn't a good solution, but, but, but we, the speed cushions could be.
Okay, and, and you answered my other question I was gonna ask about the, actually tubes. They actually know how fast you're going?
Yeah, well, if you have two of them, then what, what they do is it's basically, uh, how long, how long they take you to get from one tube to the next.
Okay.
Right.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I do engage the, the citizens and have them make a request to, to help mitigate traffic concerns on their street. I'm, I'm actually excited about it. I do, however, agree with, um, with some of the concerns that are being brought up. I think that this does look like it could be problematic. I didn't, uh, I think Councilmember Burns brought a, a good point as far as like, there are some streets with no houses on it. So I think, um, yeah, if we're allowed to go ahead and make those requests and, and if other citizens think that there needs to be a request on there, then we need to ensure that the policy states that. I was worried about the, if we're able to carry out the demand that's gonna come with the request, and if we're, um, if we have our staff, staff properly trained to install these. Um, I did have a conversation with the city manager, and he assured me that we were going to have that taken care of. I did like that there was an appeal process on there. I think that, um, the traffic study, I was wondering if, what kind of traffic study, as Councilmember Perez pointed out, if it was just gonna be staff going out there and putting the tubes, or if it was an official traffic study? Because I think that the cost can get up there pretty quickly, and it's just not very practical to do a traffic study for every street that's requesting this. So I'd like to see that part minimized or scrapped altogether, if, if at all possible, if it's, if it's not gonna put us in some type of liability situations. Um, also, I think that the process needs to be digitized because I can see multiple neighbors on one street working to get, you know, to get one traffic, one speed hump down on their street. But we need to have a, a way that they can see if it's being started. And if it is, who's the contact person? Also, where is it at in the process? Because if somebody's starting it, then they leave it off, then maybe somebody else can pick up where they left off, or, you know, just so that there's a way of, to monitor that. So I think that all needs to be digitized, and we should just be heading that way as a city in general. Um, and that was it. Those are my concerns, but I, I, I would, would like to try it. I do think it's a good idea, but I do think it's, there's some problems that we need to address before taking action on it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have a, uh, a couple of questions also. Is there any other council members that would like to speak though first?
I will. Just real quick. So I, I am for traffic calming. Um, I do, I do see that it does slow down the traffic. I, I also feel that we slow down the traffic, but we only slow it down on certain streets, and we're just pushing it over to another street. With, but that's just, I just wanted to put my two cents in, since I got the microphone. But, uh, the, um, also, on one of the, um, pages in, um, what is it? Page 145, I don't know if you guys have that. But it actually has the speed table, and it has it outlined in white. I've mentioned it before that I would like to get each and every, um, speed hump. Is it a speed hump or a speed table? Speed hump?
Speed cushion.
Speed cushion. I'd like to get every speed cushion, um, identified out there. I know we have signs coming up before it, but, you know, I just, I see that it's in this picture, and that's exactly what I've been talking about, just to be able to see what you're gonna be running over.
Is it the, the detail sheet? Because I don't have the same number of.
It's on speed cushion, I think it's, uh.
It's a line that rings around the cushion, I think you're talking about, Mr. Perez, correct?
Yes.
And I'm seeing that picture next to that fire truck. So the white line that goes around the entire cushion, so it's more identifiable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Is that it, Mr. Perez?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the questions I had, or the comments I had, I think, um, as I'm understanding, this is not, uh, set in stone. This is basically for us to give input of what we'd wanna see or change or to make this thing work. I think most of us agree that the speed cushion, recommendations here to help, um, move the process along with the, for the residents. I think Mr. Burns brought that question up about some of the other streets, such as Beverly or Union, because there's no homes on there. Um, something we could do as a council, bring it forward and say, as a council member of this district, I'd like to see speed cushions put on this street, and then the council would vote on that to make that work. So this is something we could add into this if we wanted to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. The other questions I had was, we're looking at 67% of the residents, and I think one of the things that need to be cleared up here is, it says property owners, but in reality, a lot of, uh, residents are renters. So maybe that should have the option of, of tenants, you know, renters or property owners, so that we have more involvement from those living in the community or living on that street involved in it, in the process. But the question I had is, is a study done before the 67% of signatures would be collected? Or would that be after? How, how was that, how does that work?
It would be done after.
So a neighborhood wanted to do this, they got to signature. A study is done and comes back and says, oh, sorry, you don't have enough, uh, volume of traffic. Would we really say no at that point?
The, we would as far as the engineering department and the requirements, because it wouldn't meet the requirements that we're looking at. But they, as the public, have the right to appeal the engineering decision and bring it to city council.
So they could come back and say, look, engineering said no, but we want the city council to, to reevaluate this because we really feel it's necessary.
Yes.
And then we could, as a council, go ahead and vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does, uh, once they go in, if for some reason the neighborhood decided they didn't like it, the process is similar. 67% would sign a petition to eliminate them?
Yes.
Okay. What if, um, I see you, Mr. Perez, I'll call you in a second. Uh, say you had, uh, one street that goes four or five blocks. One of those blocks or two of the blocks want them, one of the blocks doesn't. So we would go ahead and put them on two of those blocks and leave out the ones that did not want them? Is that how that would work?
I think it, um, one of the requirements, um, it has to be with regard to the length of the street. I don't know if you know it, Mark, 600 feet. Um, so if one of the blocks was, you know, if, if there was a length of 600 feet without, um, encroaching into the other block per se, then that, that area would be analyzed and the other block be left alone. So it would be kind of a case by case depending on, um, the, the situation itself, really.
Mm-hmm, thank you. The other comment I had, I, from what I've heard here, I hear a lot of good recommendations. Wondering, is this something we should step back, have a, a longer conversation? This is a very important issue amongst our residents. We, we see and we hear the demand to have these tools to slow it down. Does the council feel like it needs a little more time to give their input from what we're hearing tonight from the council? Or are you guys thinking that at this point, we can just change it with our comments tonight? Because I think we need to do this right. I think Councilmember Burns made a very good point, uh, the flag pole. We set down so many rules, and it really just came back and, you know, took us in circles. So how do we do this in a way that we get more input early on? Um, I, clearly, we need some kind of rules here to, we don't want to put speed humps because one neighbor said they, they want speed humps. We want, we do want the majority, that seems fair. But what, what, I'd like to hear from the council on your recommendation, if you guys wanna have more time to, um, give your input and a, maybe a special meeting to go through this, do it well, and try to get more public input at that meeting. I don't want to, uh, jump ahead here, but I wanna make sure we're, we're giving the right input. If I can hear from any council members on that.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Mr. Resenda.
I, I don't see any other, the speed humps out. I think that, that we need to work on a policy. So I, I'd like for us to work on it and bring it back as soon as we can. But we ordered all these speed humps. I know that the citizens want them, and I don't know any other way of us to, to give them out. So I, I really would like for us to, to take a step back, get all of the comments, and maybe come back and work on this.
Yeah, uh, that's what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing. Can we go back to the main screen? I have a hard time, I, all I can see is Mr. Resenda's name, I can't see the council. Is that possible? Maybe, uh, Mr. Burns, if you could say something, so it brings us back to the, uh, the big screen.
Sure. Yeah.
Uh, there, thank you.
Okay.
So one thing we can do is?
Do we get public comment and then come back to kind of wrap up with what the council wants to do? Would that work for the council members at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and get public comment. I think Mr. B was, uh, talking about this in public input. Is he still here? Or has he put a card in?
He's here.
All right.
You can go ahead. Yeah, you can go ahead.
See, Mr. B, we didn't forget about you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm retired now, so I have time on my hands. And you might get to know me a little better. A couple of things. Uh, Mr. Burns, thank you. Uh, a couple of years ago, I sent something, it's over 10, I think, when I was, when I was laid off, and I saw this starting to happen. And I got blown off, and you're the first guy that, person that went out and actually took a look. So I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Perez, you mentioned something about putting speed bumps on a street and that shifting the speeders over to the next street? So when I retired and moved back, I came the back way, and there on Saravista, for the same length as Highland, which is the exact same, two stop signs, long stretches, they put speed bumps across all of Saravista. So exactly to your point, that's what happened. Everybody then started going on Highland, where there were already a lot of cars, and not just because of the school, but they're the biggest contributor. Uh, and it just shifted more. So I also read this while I was sitting back there, and on page 148, at the top, on letter M. If at any time during this process, finds that there would be substantial traffic diversion to parallel local street, uh, the neighborhood facilitator shall also be responsible for obtaining the approval dis, on the parallel street. So that would mean I would have to go down to Valley View. But when they did this on Saravista, it was before the policy, nobody talked to me. And that traffic got funneled straight onto Highland. Uh, I have, I live smack dab between Sunset and Vallejo. Smack dab in the middle, which are the two stop signs. And in the morning, I swear to God, and you weren't there in a good morning, a bad morning, I should say, 50 to 60 in front of my kitchen window. And I'm a pretty good judge of speed. Uh, my neighbor to my right and his wife are retired. They were optometrists in the building right here. Neighbor across the street was the former city clerk, she's retired, and a few other people, and they can vouch for what I'm saying. And I can get signatures. But I think the last thing I'd say, uh, I'm no civil engineer. Sorry. I'd be happy with a traffic calming circle or a stop sign or two.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? But it's problematic, and something's gonna happen.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. So let's go back, I, let's, maybe each council member can make their, uh, their point, and then we could, uh, decide on bringing this back to date certain or for a special meeting. That way we're kind of incorporating some of these ideas, or just have a special meeting. Which would you all prefer?
I'm okay either way. I can go for a special meeting. Either way.
I'll, I'll go through each person. Councilmember Morales, how would you, what would you prefer?
I, I'm open to either at the pleasure of the council. I would, my only request is Saturday.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I would absolutely prefer a special meeting that gets well-announced. Um, what Mr. B spoke about is exactly what happened on Saravista. Um, it was an unintended consequence, and Saravista had been on the radar, no pun intended, for a number of years prior to this council. And, um, I think we need to err on the side of public safety. I did see a, a couple of stop sign violations while I happened to be parked out there that day. And I also think it'd be very important for our police department to weigh in on this process. I, I've heard a concern that maybe the reason they would be removed would be because they're gonna slow the emergency services down. So far, I've not heard any of those kind of complaints from residents, and I'm not asking for them. But, um, yes, I, I think a special meeting where this could be the sole focus. And I do agree that a policy is necessary. I just believe this one needs to be reworked, and I, I think we should pull it and move in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Resendas?
Thank you. I'm fine with a special meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm fine with a special meeting also. Maybe we could have that, uh, at our next Saturday meeting that we have the redistricting conversation happening. What was the date on that one? Nova?
The date of the meeting is Saturday, the 8th, but, um, with the, a lot of city offices closing the week in between. with the, a lot of city offices closing the week in between Christmas and New Year's, it, it doesn't give staff more than maybe two to three days at most to, to get ready to have it on that meeting.
Okay. When's our next, uh, this is a pretty important topic. I know a lot of residents are looking forward to us getting this done. How about, um, how would you all feel about the fifteenth or twenty, or twenty-second?
Mayor Velazquez, I believe the fifteenth, well, they all work for me, but I do believe Martin Luther King Day is the, is the eighteenth.
Yes.
So I think a lot of folks may be caught up in that weekend in celebration.
Correct, sir. How about the twenty-second?
That will work for me, sir.
Would that work for the rest of the council?
I'm good.
Yes.
Okay. I would recommend then we each send our comments to the city clerk, so they can incorporate them, and then we have that meeting. We can work out the other items, invite the public to- If we could have a motion for a, to table this to a special meeting on to the twenty-second?
So moved.
Do we have a time? No, we'll get it later.
How, how's ten o'clock for all of you?
Mayor, could I suggest nine AM?
Nine, fine with me. I'll, I'll be there at six if you want, so.
I'm good with that, too.
Nine AM on the twenty-second, is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
There is a consensus on that item.
Yes.
Does that work? Mr. City Manager, City Attorney?
That works.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for everybody's input. Let's move on now to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F eight. Good input, guys. It's very, very good input from everyone. Let's move on to item F eight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, good evening. Abraham Prado, Development Services Department, Planning Manager and Interim Director. The item before you titled Proposal for the San Felipe Road Precise Line and Beautification Study is essentially a master plan, master design plan for San Felipe Road between Highway one fifty-six to the north and Highway twenty-five to the south. As you all know, currently, the area right now, to the west, has a detention basin all along the corridor. Also, to the east, there's another detention basin all along the corridor. Currently, there's no sidewalks, no curves, no gutters, just existing overhead utilities. There's no protected or no bike lane. There is no, um, park strips, landscape park strips. As you know, also, there are some intersections that are significantly controlled, such as Highway twenty-five and San Felipe, a little bit more to the north. You see that there's another one at Wright Road, McCloskey. You see there's another one also just to the north of that on Fallon Road. And finally, there's another one on one fifty-six. It's about a three-mile stretch, approximately, between that, that whole area. So approval of this item this evening would provide for a complete design of this area, not only to have a nice entry into the city of Hollister from the north side, but more importantly, one that is a safe and, and, um, a safe entry with a precise plan for improvements, such as sidewalk, curb, gutters, requirement to underground, existing overhead utilities, the design for a bike, bike lane. Also, the design for potentially additional intersection improvements. I know that currently, because we have been working on other projects in the, in the vicinity, there is, um, discussions and requirements for, uh, another intersection improvement on Flane and San Felipe, and then another intersection improvement on San Felipe, and where Bird Drive will be extending and connecting onto San Felipe as well. But there will be, this, this line, this precise line study would evaluate if those are the, the only ones, or if there's a potential for additional ones in that area as well. So it goes without saying that we will take into consideration all the other studies that were, that have been done for other projects in the vicinity, um, in, in these past years. At this time, the city of Hollister unfortunately does not have a precise line study for that corridor, uh, for those improvements. The benefits of having an approved ultimate design plan for San Felipe Road for this particular area is that when development occurs, especially, uh, along San Felipe Road, the developers will actually be required to do the improvements, as, as, as opposed to right now, because we do not have a, an approved plan line. At this point, the city of Hollister can only accept the cost, and these are the estimate, engineers' estimate costs. And we, we, of course, we get them and we provide them, and we, we place them on a deposit account. However, the, the benefit, the big benefit of this is that if one is approved, then, um, you know, we'll, we'll have it through, through public input, city council input, and then upon development of a project, then the developer would be required to actually construct, not, not just, not just receive an estimate and fund, but actually construct. Staff wanted to bring to your attention that we have been seeing a lot of interest in regards to potential development in our north area of the city of Hollister, north of Highway twenty-five and, um, along San Felipe Road, especially in the most recent, um, future. We have met with various developers in the area, uh, various property owners in the area, and there's a lot of interest of potentially having some, some developments in our industrial zoning district, hopefully in the near future. So we'll be seeing a lot of that. And having a, having an approved design plan line would be very beneficial upon development of these, of these, um, properties. The attached proposal titled San Felipe Road Precise Line and Beautification Study is precisely to have an ultimate improvement plan for San Felipe Road between Highway one fifty-six and Highway twenty-five, um, for a nice and safe entrance into the city of Hollister. Pending approval of this item this evening, hopefully, staff will then begin the meetings internally at the beginning of 2022. We're looking at the first week of January, starting to get together to start developing this design plan, and hopefully bring it to you, uh, within the first quarter or so of the year, to, to have public input and councils' input. Thank you so much for your time. Is there any questions for staff?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Prado, um, two questions. I, I understand the parameters of the request here. This sounds vaguely familiar to me, and it seems like part of the challenge the city faced with the construction of the new Starbucks, as well as across the street, the remodel of the Taco Bell. And so, it, is there a, a way to extend that project further, maybe down to Fourth Street, to have it encompass more? And, and perhaps I'm mistaken. And then my second question would be, has, has this been presented for consideration to our planning commission? Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Tim. So, um, you're absolutely right. Taco Bell and Starbucks, Farmer Jerry's, there are two projects that we actually took before the planning commission with the last year, year or so. And, um, at this point, uh, we can, ultimately, we can extend it further. Um, I think for purposes of, of getting, getting things going, because of the interest that we're getting specifically for our industrial zoning district, if, it would be staff's recommendation, if possible, to move forward with, with this precise line, and then we can analyze and come back with, with, uh, an additional analysis, if it's the pleasure of the council, for, uh, further south. However, we do have certain sections further south of Highway twenty-five, such as from, from Highway twenty-five to Gateway Drive. We have, um, had, um, Rick Engineering help us through other developments that have occurred. Gateway Drive, the hotels that are currently, um, the hotels that was recently, uh, approved and constructed, and the hotel that is currently under construction. We had all of them do traffic study requirement analysis. And so we do have already, um, between, essentially from, from Highway twenty-five to Gateway Drive, a design, uh, plan, but it would definitely be beneficial to, to come back before you to consider, uh, an additional extension, uh, further south. That would actually be the northern gateway, or north gateway general plan designation. What, what we're looking at tonight is, is partially the north gateway from Highway twenty-five to McCloskey, and from McCloskey onward, industrial, which is really with the, the, where we're getting the most inquiries about, um, especially in, in, in our recent futures, probably approximately from a year ago or so. So to answer your question, Councilman Tim, absolutely, we can extend it. Staff's recommendation would be to hopefully focus on, on this, this plan line and come back to it. And, um, and, and in regards to has this potential, has this project been, uh, presented to our planning commission? Not, not this per se. We have, planning commission has seen all of the projects that have come before them. They're the ones that have taken action, but this actual plan and, plan lane has not been presented to them. However, we would be more than happy to bring it back, um, to them as well in January. As, uh, we can, that, ultimately, they would be the ones, they would, they would be able to look at it and, and provide comment, uh, to it, as you know. However, you as a council are the ones that have, um, the last word, and, and our hope is for us to get the ball rolling and, and hopefully get it adopted, have, have it hopefully approved, and we can definitely bring it as an informational report to the planning commission in January.
Thank you, Mr. Prado. No, I'm very supportive. I think it's very important. I would say it borders on critical-
Yes.
-for our gateways into our community. You only have one opportunity to make a good first impression.
Sure.
And, and in addition here, there are some, it sounds like there could be some, uh, certain, uh, cost savings if it's only through project management. And so, uh, I'd be very supportive of, of extending it or coming back for another bite of this apple to, um, expand it further south, but I am very supportive, and thank you for your work and your staffs as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Tim.
Uh, Vice Mayor Perez, go ahead, sir.
That's, that's a great idea to, to bring in, uh, farther south of twenty-five, especially on the east side of San Benito Street. Those, I've seen a couple of cars stuck in there, and they weren't parked. Well, they were kind of parked, but, uh, yeah, but it's ultimately the safety for the residents. Um, and as far as from one fifty-six north, there is a lot of, of businesses that are talking, um, about coming in, and it's really exciting for the future of, of Hollister. Um, great things are coming. I totally support this, um, especially, um, if we can, like, start, I don't, I don't know. That, if we could do something, especially between one fifty-six, I mean, twenty-five and, um, and Wright Road, where we get a lot of pedestrian traffic, and, uh, you know, we lost a, a fellow resident about a month ago or so. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I totally support this, and a great job, uh, not just you, but everybody in the department and the people that are talking to all these businesses coming in. It's really, really exciting. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rick.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? I just want to say, I, I agree with all the comments. This is very exciting. Lot of things coming to the airport area. A lot of businesses interested in, in coming in, which is really gonna be great for our community and employment. Very important, as I think Mr. Perez or Mr. Burns pointed out, you get one shot at, uh, that first impression, and I think it- Protected bike lanes, make it pretty through there, give our residents a way to get to work on their bikes or in a safe manner, or, again, something that can be proud of. So this is an important step. I agree. The other project going on now is between Gateway and, and twenty-five, and we do need to extend it all the way south now. Now that we're making so much progress and we see what's coming, we need to make that final connection, that piece that starts to make sense of the whole thing. And again, with the protected bike lanes and, uh, again, a way for people to get to work on their bikes or in a safe manner, in a, in a visually pleasing manner. So thank you for all your hard work, Abraham. Do we have any other comments?
There are no speakers and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at eight twenty-eight. Shall we take our five-minute break? And we can come back at eight thirty-five? Make that a seven-minute break?
Okay.
Or do you guys want to keep going? It's up to you guys. Did I hear we take, we go ahead and take a five-minute break, everyone?
I, I'd like a break.
All right, everybody's moving around. Good. Let's take that five-minute break. All right, everybody's moving around. Good. Let's take that five-minute break.
The item before you is Resolution Number two twenty-one dash two forty, and it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving an application for the Clean California Local Grant Program. And staff is recommending two site projects. The first, um, location is at the north side of the River Park Trail. Um, and through the combination of adding beautification measures and art in public spaces along with a removal of little projects. The effort will enhance our community, community and improve space for walking and recreation. Um, staff did meet with Mark, um, acting engineer and the project that he is, uh, his staff is working on the North Gate Beautification Project. We are working on connecting the two projects together. So we were excited about that. I know it's not in the report, but we met with him on last Monday to, um, go over some of those connections. And then our second recommendation is along, um, San Felipe and Frontage Road. Um, just before us, uh, Abraham Prado presented, made a presentation, um, along San Felipe. But this would be down Frontage Road and it would be a, another connection to, um, some local services within, um, the county. And so staff is recommending that we, um, work with the County of San Benito, um, and applying for this grant and partnering with them. And we would also like to pursue the hiring of a grant writer and looking for council's approval. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Timber.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you. So I just want to be clear that, do I understand correctly that we've already, uh, been awarded and we're going to receive almost $2 million in a grant?
Um, so this grant, we're, um, requesting to apply for the Clean California Local Grant Program. It's, it is through Cal, Caltrans and this is, um, the River Park Trail is one of them. So it, it extends, um, it will be an extension to the River Park Trail. And then the second one, um, since we're already applying for the grant, uh, we were approached by the county to see if we'd like to work on Frontage Road for pedestrian bike lanes. Um, so that would be the second, uh, application that we're looking into. There's a maximum grant of five, $5 million and each project, um, if, if awarded, it could be, um, at least $2 million each.
Okay. Uh, just the language was a bit confusing to me. I was, uh, all ready to celebrate, but, uh.
That's on the next item, sir.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. All right. That, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Another question?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Councilmember Morales, did you have a question?
I think it was Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Perez? I saw somebody moving back there.
Yeah, that was me. Um, you said something about hiring a grant writer. What does that cost?
Um, working with, uh, Kim Lee Horn, we got an estimate and it would be anywhere between $10,000 to $14,000 to, for a grant writer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards and there's no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the, uh, presentation. Tina, great job.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor, before we get onto the next one, I have to recruise myself because I live within 500 feet of that project. So I, uh, turned it over to Abner, Mr. Prado and Kina Garza to run this item in my, my absence.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Burns, you can celebrate now, okay?
Thank you, sir.
We're going to now speak on F- F- ten. Go ahead, Tina.
Um, good evening, uh, Mayor Velazquez and council. Um, resolution before you is twenty twenty-one dash two four one, and this is where we can, uh, if accepted, I should say, where we can celebrate. Um, the city was awarded a Prop sixty-eight, uh, grant from the, um, uh, California State Department of Parks and Recreation, um, for a brand-new park over at Fire Station Two, that the adjacent property to Fire Station Two. And it's a $1 million, $1,826,125,000 grant, if I said that right, because I'm so nervous. Thank you. And so we're just looking for acceptance of this grant.
Okay. Do we have any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Tina, I remember when we, when you first had a meeting over at the firehouse and I think Mary Paxton was there. Uh, it's been a long time coming. Congratulations. It's, it's nice to see all your hard work come to fruition. Uh, you have been killing it. You deserve all the praise and we're so appreciative of you. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments from council members?
Pickleball court, yay.
Where's Henry?
Mayor Velazquez, Timber.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
So, so I'm just wondering, is there a way to maybe put this out so that the community knows, uh, about this? I mean, yeah, if they read the council agenda, they'll understand it. But, but I think that this just, again, is a classic example of, uh, city staff. They're not looking for atta boys and atta girls. They simply are looking for, uh, respect and support. But I do think that this is worthy of some sort of a press release or something of that magnitude. Because again, this is city staff, uh, making our community better for us as residents. Thank you.
Is that a rec, would you like me to work on a?
I, I would, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely, we'll get this out. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
How soon before we get it started and, and when do you, um, think that it would be completed?
Um, we just received an email today. Um, it was probably around five o'clock that it came in. Um, and I forwarded it to Abraham, so Abraham and I talked about, um, meeting and going over and discussing our next steps. There is a mandatory webinar that we need to attend, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And once attend, once we attend that, then we can, um, move. We could move forward with the design and we can, um, kind of take care of that and, and, and make sure, you know, the, the bid process. Because we've already been awarded, but there's a couple of other things that we have to go through. Um, Abraham, Abraham and I talked about, uh, kind of kickstarting, uh, the beginning of the year. Um, we're just kind of wrapping up a few things. Uh, as, um, you guys heard earlier, we will take the next week off. And then, uh, January third, we'll hit the floor running, so to speak.
Perfect. Is that it? Mr. Resendez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Tina, I just wanted to say thank you to you and all the other staff members. Uh, Mr. Resendez said it earlier. You guys have been on an absolute roll, making things happen. I was talking to the city manager last week. I think we're probably close to eight to $10 million in grants this year that we won through the city. If not more, and your team really has been doing a tremendous job. Mr. Burns, you're absolutely right. We need to get this out, more out to the public and we'll make sure it's in the next absolutely a press release. Just want the people to know, we have been winning a lot of grants in this city and it's exciting. And I'm looking forward to, uh, incorporating the, the grant writer. So we're going to be winning quite a bit more in the following years and we're going to be doing these projects that we've been dreaming about. Um, the fishing pond, finishing that trail around and all those other great plans that we have in place and we're finally getting to them. So thank you so much and thank everyone involved in that process. Ms. Morales, did I see you raise your hand?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, um, Ms. Garza, congratulations for all, all the work that you've been doing and we look, I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we have one speaker on Zoom, Robin Pollard. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Um, you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So this is really exciting news. I've had, um, three people in the last couple of days ask me what the 1.8 million dollars was for the, on the agenda, and I did not know it was for the new fire station park. So I'm going to be letting those people know that that's, um, that fire station, that fire safety station, uh, park will be really a great asset to the community and, uh, thank you, staff. And for everyone for being so patient while we, um, go through all the process of applying for these grants. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this grant?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Great job. We'll move now to item G, reports from city council members regarding their committees. Uh, Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Morales?
Nothing to report.
Uh, Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I attended COG last week and they will be presenting last week.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Per, uh, Mr. Resendez covered the item. It's this, uh, the Rena numbers are a very important issue. I do want to say that, uh, the entire COG board was not happy about the numbers that were, are being handed down by the state. Does not mean we have to build those many, that many units, but still frustrating to hear state, uh, pushing things without any backup for it. But we'll talk about that as that item comes up. We'll now move to informational reports from city council. Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, my gift to council is I will, um, do my best to keep my laundry list short tonight. So you're welcome in advance. So my, my, my first comment would be to wish our community a very happy and safe holiday season. Please be smart, please be kind, please be, uh, safe. I do want to, uh, uh, put out that, um, uh, I am going to be contributing some money to the Marty Richmond Scholarship Fund. And if you have some additional resources that you're looking to deposit before the end of the tax season, please, uh, either reach out to me or LULAC. LULAC has been kind enough to administer that scholarship fund. And I, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, being part of that process to award our graduating seniors, uh, through LULAC some, uh, scholarships. So please consider that. Um, for council's consideration, I would like for the council to take and consider in, uh, January or February or March of twenty twenty-two, maybe, uh, doing a, uh, leadership and team-building retreat uh, for all of our appointed and elected city officials. We know that we're going to get some, uh, I, I believe some potentially great, uh, firm heads. And the council is still relatively young in its age, excluding the mayor. And I'm not talking about physical age, I'm talking about years of experience. So I think that could work really well. I've actually worked in the past with a specific consulting firm and I've asked for them to provide me with some specific information that I will share with the council once I have it, but I'd like to see us maybe move forward in that regard. I did talk a little bit about my experience on Highland and, uh, the speed issue and we talked a lot about that. So I look forward to working with staff to really create a dynamic policy that will work for all parties involved. I had an opportunity via Zoom to attend the one hundred and fifty-year anniversary committee meeting. I will say, first of all, thank you to all those, uh, members of our community that are committed and dedicated and chose to do that on their own time. They are starting to gain some momentum and I look forward to seeing, uh, their good work as it moves forward. I did want to talk for a moment. I'm still concerned about, um, the fact that apparently we don't have covers for our parklets. And next week, as I understand it, beginning tomorrow, we're going to see some significant rain. And those things, if they're not water, uh, prevented, uh, or, or rain-prevented, uh, construction, they seem kind of like, uh, they're useless at this point more than we'd like for them to be. And finally, I did want to bring up, um, two things. First of all, uh, I've learned something new in the last couple of weeks and, and I would like for our council to consider maybe creating an assistant city manager position. Um, I know Mr. Miller is Superman, but sometimes, um, you know, he has that, uh, that challenge that he can't be everywhere at all the times. And I think we could definitely benefit from assistant city manager when he's not available. I know in the past it may have been a department head, but I would like to see a, a, a new position to assist the city manager. And, um, so I'd throw that out. And finally, um, Mr. Perez and I are coming to the end of our first year. It's going to be good to no longer be the freshman on council, but we've still got a lot to learn. And one of the things that I'd been part of that, uh, I failed that quite candidly, was moving forward a term limit, uh, recommendation to council. And so I would like to, um, volunteer to be part of that process. And, uh, Mr. Epperson, if you're, if you can hear me, I'm wondering, initially I thought, um, to move forward a term limit, uh, recommendation would require a vote of the people, but since we're not a charter city, my thought is that it could be as simple, as a simple majority of the council, uh, choosing to amend the existing ordinance that defines term limits. And so I'm hoping you might have some comments on that. And, um, with that, I will conclude my, uh, comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Mayor Perez?
Yeah, um, I'd like to reiterate, uh, some of his things. Uh, one is first of all, for the community, um, there's a, this is holiday season. Please drive careful. Um, call Uber, call, um, somebody. It's a, you know, call a taxi. There's people that care about you. They want you to come home. Um, we've lost a lot of people this year. Grace Baldwin, she is a local senior graduating this year and she is, um, um, doing her senior project and she's, um, she was trying to make it tonight, but she's working. But she's got, she's doing her project is to do some planters for the downtown. Um, and so I just want to know that, her to know, and, um, I've already talked with Tina and Brett, that if, you know, you guys can get together and, and talk about, um, these planters and then in the appropriate places. Also, the parklets and their, their coverings, um, on that also. The, um, another question. So I've noticed. Another question. So, I've noticed that we have pictures of council and the city manager and city clerk in various city buildings. I was wondering, why isn't the city treasurer up there if she, if we're doing elected officials? And it's, I don't, it's not that I don't like seeing your face, Brett, or Christine, but why are we, why are we putting up higher contracted employees up there instead of just elected officials? I don't know how we came up with these decisions, but I was just, I was just wondering about that. Also, redistricting webpage. I've, I don't know, is anyone, I don't know if any council's tried to get on there, but I, I don't know if it's just my inability or my technical challenges, but I haven't been able to come up with the old maps, so. I'll be, I'll be contacting staff to help direct me in that area, help me out. Also, the term limits. I, I also was hoping that we would be able to just direct, if we could just direct staff, I guess we'd have to hear from Jason first about just putting in some term limits, just, I mean, because we have an ad hoc committee, but have you guys met yet, or what's the progress on that? But if we can just nail it down up here at the council, I think we should just go that way. Succession plan, it's like, do we have a plan in place? I mean, you know, if someone gets sick or is, decides to leave our, one of our department heads or our contracted staff, do we have someone that's ready to take their place? You know, and grant, God forbid that something bad would happen to them, but we do have a city to run, and so it's like, we'd be need to know that we have people in place, ready to step up and take their spots and run with the ball until we can get someone permanently. Awesome job on the grant writing. I don't know much about grant writing, but I don't know why we don't have our own grant writer as a full-time position, but I'd like to get some more information on that from staff.
Thank you. Morales?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see on, when the warrants are on consent, that the following breakdown be added to the finances, and that includes approved budget, actual expenditure, expenditure year-to-date, and percent allocation. Also, there's the difference between the fund and the division. I'd like to see a cross tabulation of that also be presented. In terms of additions, I concur, I, I think we would benefit from adding a full-time position, coded position, either a program manager or an assistant manager for identifying resources for our community to work with our stakeholders and community engagement. They would be responsible to apply, have oversight over either the grants or resources allocated to the city. They would work with the various department heads for implementation. They would be responsible for the outcome measures, or any reporting, any of the audit requirements, the evaluation. They would also act as our public information officer to make sure that there is communication about what the city does, receives, and how they're implemented, and the impact that it has on the community, and also to work with our staff at all levels, including, in particular, focusing first on department heads on just leadership and foundational skill sets that they need for their, to run their departments. Also, I'd like to just request that the council consider preparing and planning for some of the major grants that are coming our way or actually are already here. One of them is the infrastructure bill. And I'm just going to list some of the, some of the grants that are available to us at this moment, the EPA. Again, the infrastructure is $29.5 billion over five years. There's an opportunity for us to acquire a fire prevention grant, and CalVIP grant, which is $209.65 million, and that's with the BSEC. So, those are just a few of the grants available to us that we, that our community would benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, sir. I just want to take a moment to wish all of the staff, my colleagues, community members, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I unfortunately did not get to go to the Christmas in the Park. I seen lots of pictures on it, on social media. It looked like it was a huge success. Thank you again to Rec Department. And I'm happy to see that for the Rec Department. I think she's going to make a great addition with all her experience and expertise, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I too want to thank the Rec Department on Christmas in the Park. Great job. I did not get to ice skate this year. My knee was, hurt my knee earlier in the week, and I've been limping around, but I did get to see my daughter out there skating with her, her friends, so that was a lot of fun. Great job to everybody. All the food trucks that were there are doing good business, so shows what we can do in our, in our community. I do want to thank Kimberly Horn. They've done such a great job for us as far as getting ready for our road rehab projects throughout the city. All the traffic calming projects we've done, we've focused on the, some of the streets that were, really had some of the most dangerous areas. Central, one of these is coming up. We approved Lad Lane, South Side Road today. I do want to start getting, or start planning for the next ones. That would be Memorial Street and Union. So, we can start working on some of these ideas, again, to create these protected bike lanes, slowing down the traffic on some of these areas, whether we're using circles, speed humps, whatever it is, or some of the designs, horizontal, lateral, or vertical. We need to keep going with this. It makes a big difference, especially with Memorial, knowing that it's going to be extended. We need to incorporate the designs into anything that happens anymore in our city, so it's there, out of the gate, you know, design that makes a lot more sense. We don't want to go back and have to figure something out later that's going to cost us and the residents much more money to keep them safe. So, I'm excited about everything going on. I want to thank everybody for this year. We had a just awesome this year. Staff, incredible work getting all that grants that you did, and city manager for leading the team. Really impressive job this year to everybody. Looking forward to our meeting, our planning meetings. Mr. Burns, as you pointed out early in the year, team meetings, we have a common vision. We can stay focused as we did this year. We see the results of that. To the public, please be safe, have a very Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year, spend time with your family, and enjoy your city. Thank you, everyone. City manager?
Thank you. I think you kind of led off, but the first thing I was going to ask for consensus was, but it sounds like everybody is for having a leadership guidance meeting, so we will work with Councilmember Burns to try to get a contact of somebody who will get that going. On the parklet covers, I am, been working really diligently with our building department, trying to come up with way that their, the roofs are engineered so that all members of the public are safe, with our concern is, is wind and/or earthquake, but we're trying to come up with something. So, we'll, as far as the city assistant city manager, it is one of my goals the last six months of this fiscal year is to bring a position to council, because yes, I would like to have somebody that can help out and keep this city moving smoothly, especially with the downtime I've had this past week. But speaking of that downtime, I'm pretty transparent. I think everybody knows that I caught COVID last week. Actually, it caused me to end up in the hospital for preventive measures, and I just really want to thank the Hazel Hawkins COVID emergency team for in an amazing amount of time, and the staff that just took care of me for the two days I was there. I just really want to thank them immensely. And then to the council, to the staff, and to our citizens. This last year, we've gone through another crazy COVID year, but I'm just so thrilled and proud of everyone how we keep moving the city forward, and we just need to continue it because we have a great community, and I really appreciate everybody and hope everybody has a great holidays and gets well rested up during this holiday period, and will come back, come out with a new year, doing great stuff once again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment is to respond briefly to the question my council members Burns and Perez regarding about adopting term limits for the council. So, I'll look into different options available to the city for that type of reform and provide something back to you on that matter at a future date. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'll try not to go past the three minutes. I just wanted to report to you that, starting in 2015, and then again in 2017, there was a legislation that was passed. RIPA for short, but it's Racial and Identity Profiling Act, and that requires police departments throughout the state of California, all law enforcement agencies, and university police to collect perceived demographics and other detailed data regarding pedestrian and traffic stops. Basically, anyone that the police department contacts and/or has to detain or search. During that process, it was phased in over the last four years, and the first wave were, were the larger agencies in the state, like this California Highway Patrol, LAPD, PD, the county agencies, and there were subsequent waves of larger agencies coming down to the smaller agencies, and that's wave number four, and Hollister Police Department is wave number four. So, that means, starting in January, we have to report this information to the Department of Justice. And we started working on this this last year. Captain Patonio, who's here, Captain Olson, Detective Sergeant Michael Patty, our administrator supervisor Valerie Reyna, and I myself were looking into the best ways to handle this. And just to give you an idea, it's a four-page report for every person that we contact and we detain, and the first part is the officer's information, how many years of service and what their assignment it was at the time. The setting, the date, the time, the contact, how long it lasted, the street, and whether the person is a student, and and then what the perceived race or identity is of the person, the perceived gender, perceived any disabilities, the reason for the stop, was it a traffic violation? If so, was it a moving, moving violation, equipment violation? And reasonable suspicion that engaged that the reason for the stop, and there are several check-offs there for that. And any actions that were taken, whether the person was asked to exit their vehicle, whether a field sobriety test was, was administered. All, there's about 20 different check-offs that you could do for that. And then, if there was a search, what was the basis for the search? Was it consent given? Was it a search warrant? Suspected weapons, et cetera. And then, on the last page, if there was property seized, what basis for that? What type of property was seized? And if there was contraband, what kind of contraband that was? And then, finally, the results of the stop. Was there any action taken? Was there a warning? Was an arrest, citation, and all of that? The team that was assigned to look what is the best way of getting this information, obviously filling out four pages for every contact can be time-consuming. We ended up with going with a company called Veritone, and they have developed an app on the phone. And we've, with the help of Paul De Silva, who's been working with Veritone and the Department of Justice to make sure all of this has been working. We're at the point where we've been testing this, and so far, so good. Officers are not required to do it, but they have been doing it starting this week to make sure the whole process takes, takes in place, and it's ready to go in January 1, when we're required to do this. Officers will pull out their app or on their MDC, on their computer in their car. This is web-based, and they fill out all this information. And once they get used to this, you're talking about one to two minutes tops, sometimes very quickly, 30 seconds, because there's a series of check-offs, and it prompts you, and it actually, if you're at the location of the stop, it actually pre-populates your location through GPS. So, there's ways to try to make it faster. Obviously, we don't want this to be a factor of officers not contacting people because of the work that's required. But I think it's so far so good with the thanks of Paul and the team and Veritone. It seems to be working. So, we look forward to being in compliance with the state and reporting directly to DOJ through the system, and, and doing it as efficiently as we can. So, I just want to let you know of the, the requirements that we're under, starting January 1, and the, the steps that the team has taken, and I think that so far, this solution seems to be an efficient way of being in compliance and reporting all the information that the state requires. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City clerk?
The only thing I wanted to mention was just to remind the public that our next public hearing for the redistricting process is Saturday, January 8th at 9 o'clock. It will be open to the public in person or on Zoom. We do have that redistricting page where you can give your input there, and if anyone needs assistance on using that page, the clerk's office will do our best to, to assist anyone who needs help with that. Just send us an email. And I think our email's on the, the redistricting page to contact us. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now move to item G3.
Good evening. This is Eva Kelly with the Planning Department. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Item G3, if you'll recall, a few meetings ago at the council, I presented on the RENA methodology and the current process that city staff and county staff and San Bernardino Council of Governments COG staff was at with preparing the RENA methodology, and the council requested some more information on RENA and what that means, and a little bit of how the methodology process works. So, San Bernardino Council of Government staff was kind enough to prepare a presentation for the council tonight to discuss more about the methodology. So, I do have, I believe, COG staff online, and I will hand it over to, I believe, either Mary Gilbert or Veronica Lozama for their presentation.
Good evening. Can I be a panelist? I'm trying to share my screen here, but I, I don't see it. Oh, there we go. And then I
Roger, you are on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. And I assume you can also see the presentation slides?
I cannot.
Okay, one moment.
Is that up there? We're not seeing it.
One second here. Thank you for your patience. Okay.
There we go.
Thank you. So, good council members and members of the public. Veronica Lozama, Senior Transportation Planner for the Council of San Bernardino County Governments, also referred to as COG. We appreciate the opportunity to present the draft Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Allocation, also known as RENA, for the council's input this evening. So, for this presentation, we will be defining the RENA. We will then go over the role of the state, the region, and local government agencies responsible for its implementation. The board will also receive an overview of the RENA timeline, the statutory requirements of the Six-Cycle RENA. See answer any questions that the council may have. So, since 1969, the state of California housing law has required that all local cities and counties plan to meet the housing needs of their community. This state mandate is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Arena for short. Specifically, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, is the agency responsible for identifying the specific number of housing units for which the region must plan for. Currently, COG is working Currently, COG is working on developing the six-cycle Rena, which covers an eight-year planning period between the years 2021. For this cycle, the state's allocation to the San Benito region is 5,005 housing units for the eight-year planning period. It's also important to note that local cities and counties are not required to build these units. However, they do need to lay the groundwork by having the proper zoning to streamline the process. So what is the role of the state, regional, and local governments in the Rena process? As noted, the state's primary role is to identify the total number of homes each region in California must plan for. The role of the regional government, in this case, the COG, is to allocate a share of that number to the cities of Hollister, Batista, and the county of San Benito, based on a COG-developed methodology with the input from those local agencies. The cities and county must then update their respective housing element and general plan, as well as zoning, to show how it plans to accommodate its share of the regional housing need. And for the public's benefit, the Council of Governments is a policy board responsible for adopting the Rena in San Benito County. The board is comprised of two representatives from the County Board of Supervisors, two members from the Hollister City Council, and one from the San Juan Batista City Council. The COG... Local government agencies ensures that all jurisdictions have a seat at the table when discussing Rena. In addition, it's also important to highlight that thus far, the Council of Governments has held two Rena planning meetings with the staffs of the county and two cities. And those conversations have not concluded. COG is committed to continuing our collaborative efforts with the local jurisdictional staff. In addition, COG staff presented to the County Board of Supervisors last week and is also scheduled to present to the San Juan Batista City Council tomorrow night. And we look forward to hearing from all of our local government agencies on the six-cycle Rena. And before going into the Rena draft allocations, I wanted to briefly go over the timeline. So in late September of this year, HCD presented COG with its Rena number. During the months of October through December and into January, COG staff will be continuing those conversations with local agency staff on the draft Rena numbers. Last Thursday, the COG board provided some initial feedback on the draft Rena methodology options, which again will be presented momentarily. The COG board also directed staff to encourage the cities of Hollister, San Juan Batista, and the county to write a letter of concern to HCD with 1,005 Rena allocation number. The COG board is scheduled to have a special meeting on January 11th to continue its conversation on the Rena. Then at their January 20th meeting, the board will then hold a public hearing, approve the preferred Rena methodology, and authorize staff to submit that to HCD for input. During this time, local jurisdictions may appeal their allocation number during, to the COG board. If there are no appeals, then the COG board will then release the draft Rena for public comment sometime in either March or April. And upon closing of the public comment... Agencies will have up until December 2023 to update their housing element to reflect the Rena allocation. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and turn it over to Beth Jarris, Program Director at PBR, who will be going over the statutory requirements of Rena and draft methodology options for your input. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Beth. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Beth.
Thank you. So there are five primary statutory objectives to the regional housing needs process. And to be respectful of your time, I won't read the statute word for word. As objective one is to increase the mix of housing types in equitable manner. And you'll note that equity is a key to objective one. Objective two is to promote infill development and socioeconomic equity. Again, we see equity as a key objective. Next slide, please. Objective three is to improve jobs-housing balance. And that's both in terms of the total jobs-housing balance and also ensuring that there are lower, there's lower-income housing in close proximity to lower-income jobs. Objective four is to allocate more lower-income housing to jurisdictions that have historically had less lower-income housing. That phrase affirmatively furthering fair housing basically means that areas that have historically had less lower-income housing need to add more and need to address any historical segregation or inequality. Next slide, please. There are also 13 factors that COGS should consider. So when HCD presents this information, they note that no region has incorporated all these factors in their methodology, but they may and should consider any that are important to their region. And those include the jobs-housing relationships, opportunities and constraints to development. And statute is very particular about which opportunities and constraints may be considered and which may not. Three is maximizing transit and transportation infrastructure, directing growth toward incorporated areas, loss of assisted units, high housing cost burdens, overcrowding, farmworker housing needs, housing needs of college students and those experiencing homelessness, loss of units during an emergency, SB 375 greenhouse gas reduction targets, or other factors as determined by the COG. Next slide, please. And note that in the fifth cycle, the regional housing needs determination for the region was 2,194 units, which you see at the very bottom part of the screen there. And the allocation across sections is in that far-left column. So 1,316 units allocated to the city of Hollister out of that 2,194. And also, the middle column shows the total number of permits that were issued over that same period of time. And the entire region has done quite well in constructing the units that were planned in the fifth cycle. More than 70% of units that were planned for were built. And again, the whole process is about planning and making sure that there are adequate sites and making sure that housing elements were constructed over the last cycle. Next, one other piece to keep in mind, 2,194 number. With the sixth cycle, the one that we're going into, there are several changes in state law that have increased the housing allocation to all regions around the state. Regions' allocations have doubled or more than tripled in some cases. So the housing allocation for San Benito County is 5,005 units for sixth cycle. And the state also issues allocations by income category. So 1,110 very low-income units, 890 low-income units, 947 moderate, and 2,058 above-moderate units. Next slide, please. So the next couple of slides that I'm going to walk through are methodology options that COG has developed in consultation with staff from local jurisdictions over the last couple of months. These are the starting point for discussion. And as was alluded to earlier, perhaps not the ones that will be going forward. But to give you a sense of where this is coming from, the leftmost column, where it says housing is the number of housing units that are expected to be constructed as part of the regional growth forecast that AMBIAG produced for the transportation plan. Those numbers were also developed in consultation with each of the local jurisdictions and approved by the AMBIAG board about a year ago. The next chunk of information is the number of jobs that each jurisdiction has in 2020 and their share of the region's jobs. And about 1,660 units of the 5,000 is allocated based on that in this method. And then the final chunk is what's called resiliency. So it's the proportion of each jurisdiction that is not in a high wildfire risk area. And looking at how that might affect growth over time. And 293 units are allocated by methodology option A. Next slide, please. Methodology option B looks at a similar mix of factors, but instead of 10 years of forecasted housing unit change, it only looks at five. So basically, more units, 3,030, are allocated based on jobs, and more units, 535, are based on resiliency. Next slide, please. And the final slide makes that change in terms of the forecast and then also shifts the balance between jobs and resiliency. So more units are based on... See quite quickly, and that's because in the next slide, you'll see all three of them lined up side by side, showing a range of allocations, putting more units into the city of Hollister as you go through the options. So option A has the fewest units in Hollister, and option C has the most. And with that, I will turn it back over to Veronica.
Great. Thank you so much, Beth. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for council questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns.
We can take down the screen there. There we go. Thank you. Go ahead. Who is speaking?
Tim Burns, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. If I understood things correctly, these are allocations, but there is no expectation that we actually have to hit the number. Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. And so as long as we have a plan in place, if we don't hit numbers, are there any consequences for not meeting the commitment or the allocation?
No, there's no penalty. The only penalty that would come into place would be if a local agency would decide not to amender zoning to accommodate potential future housing. But there is no direct penalty for constructing these units. That is correct.
And I may be getting a little too far into the weeds, but under one of the numbers for different housing consideration, one was farmworker housing. And is there an opportunity to collaborate with the public and private sectors on some of these? So, for example, I know that they've done some amazing farm labor housing in Spreckles. And I don't know, without the private sector involved, that would not have happened. And there was a firm commitment, and I know Monterey County's done some amazing things.
Yes, so the local government agency would be the one responsible for setting what the housing would look like. COG is only responsible for identifying the number of units, but that's up to the discretion of the city of Hollister. Is that correct, Beth?
Yes. So if in the public-private partnership, a site could be identified and included in the housing element, then yes, that could be included toward completing your housing element. And then although there are no penalties for not building, the state does track whether or not jurisdictions are building. And so if there was a project, a public-private project that went forward to build farmworker housing, the city of Hollister could take credit for that as well.
Great. Thank you. I guess my other questions and comments are probably more directed towards either Mr. Prado or Mayor Velazquez, knowing your experience and participation. And so I know we're doing a general plan update now. And I guess my question is, will the housing element in the general plan update address these issues and concerns in a proactive way?
Councilmember Tim, would you like for, is it okay for me to answer it now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Tim, the city of Hollister is going through an update of the general plan at this time, updating all of its elements. We're updating our land use, transportation, all the different elements. Housing element is one of the elements within the general plan. As Veronica was stating, the current housing element that we have was an eight-year cycle from 2005 to 2023. And so at this point, we have a certified housing element. And so with this, the housing element that we're going to be updating, it's going to be actually separately from our general plan update. But we are going to be working on updating the housing element. It's different from the placeworks housing update, I mean, general plan update that we're doing, but it's going to be folded in with the overall update of the general plan. So to answer your question, the housing element per se right now, we're not working on with the update of the general plan. But we are going to start the process separately, beginning in 2022, focusing specifically on the housing element, and it will be folding it in to the general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Prado. That completes my questions, and thank you to the COG staff as well.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you for the information. I just, you know, did a regular search. And can you, you talked about not having any penalties or issues. Can you tell me the implication of not receiving letters of noncompliance from HCD and the impact that Senate Bill 102 has? Because and the state mandates for cities? So if you can just share a little bit more on that, I'd appreciate it.
Beth, did you want to go ahead and address that?
I will do my best. I am a demography and housing expert, not necessarily a legal expert, but I work on, I have worked on Rena for years. So I will do my best to try to answer that question. The, there are penalties for having, for not having a housing element that's in compliance. And they include things like losing out on state funds and not being eligible for certain programs. There are new state laws, and I don't recall exactly which one, that also suggest that if your housing element is not in compliance and certain low-income sites could end up being ministerial permits, where it, you know, sort of, there's less oversight, less city oversight in the development of the project. But I don't have a lot of detail to share about exactly what penalties could be in place.
And if I may, Councilmember Morales, what we can do is do a, look into seeing what, maybe what potential funding, you know, would be at risk. But again, that would only happen if a city or a county does not amend their general plan to accommodate Rena. And not associated with actual, you know, building of the units.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Morales?
Did you touch on Senate Bill 102?
Beth, are you more familiar with that? I'm not as familiar with that.
I am not.
Yeah.
Can we get information back in another way?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that it? Councilmember Morales? Okay, Councilmember Resenas, go ahead.
Thank you. To address, I forgot who it was that was asking about the general plan. I believe, Mr. Prado, that we are asking, or we are, the general plan committee is saying that we want higher density in downtown. So I think it would address the Rena numbers if we were to allow that. I think there's a push from the state to have more higher-density mixed-use projects near transportation hubs, is my understanding. Even not required to build out, I just want to point out that we almost met the Rena numbers, looking at that last report. We were very close to it. So even though we're not required to build it out, it does happen, and we're very close to meeting that. Also, I was going to ask the COG staff to please provide us with the policy that dictates how the Rena numbers come about. I'd like to just come through it and see. I'd like to familiarize myself with it. So if we can get that to us, I'd appreciate it.
I can drop it in the chat.
Okay, perfect. And then just to speak as to what happened at COG, I think everybody there was not happy about the Rena numbers. Provided a letter to COG, I believe it was addressed to COG, Ms. Lozama, wasn't it?
Correct, yes.
That they weren't very happy about it. The COG board also decided to write a letter to the Senator Caballero and Robert Rivas and to the, to, I don't know, the department, I forget what it's called, the people that assign us the Rena numbers.
HCD.
Thank you, HCD. So I would request that the City Council also considers writing a letter. However, I'm a bit of a pessimistic, and I think it's going to just fall on deaf ears. They, that's why I would really like to... In short, I think what we're looking at is coming up with a creative way to earmark... Well, and Eva spoke to this earlier, and I was a little bit spooked when she first spoke about it. But I think... spoke about it. But I think what we're looking at is potentially taking on the majority of the numbers to appease the state. But if there's a way that we can earmark those to be for more higher-density slash mixed-use, if and when we build out in that sense. Because the county does not want to take on any more of that housing as either, as my understanding. So I'm very much looking forward to continue this conversation. It's an interesting one. I did run into Robert Rivas this morning, and, and he pretty much said, everybody is not happy about the Rena numbers. But I think that there's a push from the state as well. I discussed that with him, to have more higher-density mixed-transportation hubs. And the state's trying to look at it in a different light. Single-family homes, I don't know of any elected official here in the county that is in favor of, of approving or building any more single-family homes. But I do think that we need more affordable senior housing, higher-density, multifamily. So I'm all for that, if, if it's done in the right way. So that, that's, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. So I'll send the other councilmembers to have questions or comments.
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns, one last question.
Go ahead, sure.
If the redistricting that was proposed goes through, will that alter this in any way?
No.
Thank you.
So I do want to give some input on this. It, it can be a complicated issue here, as is mentioned. Basically, the Rena numbers are assigned, and it is what it is. And there really is, if we send an appeal, that they're going to reject the appeal. The concerning part of this whole thing is, these numbers have now doubled. You can see the impact of just the last set, we did 72%. Right now, we're at capacity on Highway 25. COG has been working diligently, trying to get this new road built. But with all the requirements from the state, that's still 10 years out. Even though we, the voters voted for it, we have the money to fund it, it's still 10 years out with all the work that needs to be done as far as environmental studies, designs, and so on, all through some of the state rule. Thing with the rail, we've been working on trying to get rail. That's a good 10 years out, plus another 100 million, if we can get the private owner of the rail line to let the community to use that rail line. But there's different ways to do this. It's very important to understand, as was pointed out, the numbers don't mean we have to build. But if we're not planning wisely, that's what ends up happening in our community. We've, we've seen this already. We've seen this endless amount of single-family homes being built in our community. And really, what, what's happening is, it's pushing out our own residents. Now, when you look the state will say things like, what they really want is more affordable housing for the communities and low-income housing, and so on, and so on. But 50% of the numbers are for above moderate. In other words, are for single-family homes. This is where we get into trouble. And I, I've said this before with the state, the state just needs to be more upfront and honest about it, instead of hiding it in different ways. But as a community, smart planning really changes the game here. And I think our general plan that we've been working on, it's going to be coming to us for approval this year. We took a lot of that into consideration, really working towards it within the city. Because the issue that's been happening is, builders have just said, we don't want to build high-density. We want to build single-family homes. That's where we make all our money. And unfortunately, over the years, we've allowed this to happen over and over and over again. Now, the laws have changed in our state. So partly, I'm against a lot of these things, partly I'm, I'm for it. And what we could do, and what we need to do is make sure each and every project is or has a higher density. So we have a higher mixed-use within every community, along with the single-family homes. And then we'll throw a duplex at the corner of the, the project. Now, we could, as a city, demand any and all projects to have a higher density. That will help meet these requirements with the, the Rena numbers. And it helps our community, because now we're providing housing for our own community, rather than just single-family homes. So that really has to be a priority. The density is the key to this in the future. The other thing we need to do is work with the county to take their numbers in and put them into the city. Now, that might sound counterintuitive and say, well, we don't want that. But the reality is, the infrastructure is, and if we can, again, stay focused on the higher-density, we won't have the sprawl that's happening in the county. We can see the impact in our city from the sprawl that's going on throughout the county. And I think the county now sees the impact to them also. So we need to work with them. And I think at this time, they might be willing to start working with us, maybe assign some of those numbers back to the city, where we can control growth through higher-density, which doesn't mean we're, we're stopping growth, but we're planning better, because it helps financially, as far as our infrastructure, it's not creating the same strain for more and more roads, or more need for more schools. The thing with higher-density is, a lot of our residents right now are already doubled up in homes. So this gives them the opportunity to buy some of these multifamily homes. So that starts to make sense. The reality of single-family homes is, most people buying them, or great majority, and we need to get these numbers, are really coming from out of town now. Because the very few residents can afford $800,000 homes in, in our community. So planning well, being smart about it, can lead us to a, a program that makes sense. One of the things that we discovered when the state was coming down with mandates on building, I pointed this out, was the county is actually exempt from these mandates, because it's a rural county, more than 50% rural. So they're actually exempt from having to comply with these state laws, because the state themselves say, we need to preserve prime ag land, ranch land, all these things they want to preserve, because once we lose it, we lose it. You can see San Jose area, you can see Southern California for an example of that. So we need to be protective of our, our farmland, especially prime, and even our ranch land. And again, this is more transportation. This is what COG is all about. How do we get better transportation for our, our community to, as we said earlier, bike to work in a protected bike lane, better transportation buses going, taking people to work, fixing Highway 25, getting the rail lines going. We do this by concentrating on our growth in an area, rather than more sprawl. So we can do it. And Mr. Burns, you asked a great question about the farmworker housing in Spreckles and other areas. I actually have been involved with those projects. I've been touting them for quite a while to our community about what they are doing in Monterey County. My company, you know, to be working on all of those projects for farmworker housing. There are ways, great ways to do it. And there are ways that those could be done within the county. And this is where that partnership happens. And I think now, I think I see a partnership with the county, where we're all understanding the impacts. What we can't afford any longer is growth that really, we, we can't control. Our schools are can't accept any more students. We're, we're beyond the, beyond the numbers already. So good planning is important. I think it's important that we do send a letter to the, express our concerns, let them know our feelings, that what they're saying is, it's just not right. Of course, at the end of the day, we're going to have to accept them. But we need to let them know that continuing to punish communities like ours, without the funding to build the new highways, without the funding to build the new schools, it's not fair. And it's not right. If they want to have food on their tables, they need to protect the rural areas and make sure we can provide that, not lose the precious, the precious things that we do in our community. So again, I, I know it's been hard on the, the staff in getting these Rena numbers. I'm sure they didn't want to bring them to us. When you double those numbers, and in today's atmosphere of our community, of we can't take any more growth, it's a hard thing to do. But planning together, we can do well. Eva, you had mentioned this idea before about bringing in the numbers from the county to the city. I think we should, again, work on this as, as a community, and really focus on working on getting projects done that provide housing for our community first. That's more the affordable. Again, the general plan will be adopting 20%, a 15%, and then moving to 20% affordable. We have nothing right now, by the way, in the higher density. So we did plan for this. We do need to make some improvements to that plan. But we, we did see this coming. So I'm, I'm, again, happy with all that we did. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you to keep planning wisely, like we've been doing in the last, last year. So those are my comments. Eva, did you have a comment? Your hand is raised.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I was just hoping to speak to actually councilmember Resendas's, a few of his points.
Sure.
Thank you. He, councilmember Resendas, you were talking about bringing it in and keeping the higher-density. And Mayor Velazquez, you also were speaking to it. And I just wanted to reiterate that in our current general plan update process, yes, the, the goal is to turn kind of the lower-density areas that we have into more higher-density areas for planning. And I think kind of the, the point that I was hoping to make at the previous council meeting is that even with what we've planned in our general plan, you know, kind of medium-density and high-density areas, we still have quite a few low-density areas that exist. And as we've planned our general plan update, we are probably set to go to meet these kind of lower half and half numbers that we're seeing with the Rena. And so I think our goal as staff was to push further into those low-density areas and turn those also into high-density areas in the housing element. And to speak to Abraham's point earlier, while the general plan update that we're currently working on placeworks isn't specifically going to address the housing element, planning staff has about $300,000 in grants ready to go, waiting on these Rena numbers to be official, to have a consultant assist us with our housing element. And to speak to councilmember Morales's point earlier, that's one of the types of grants that we would not be eligible for if we did not have a housing element in compliance. I believe we have our LEAP and REAP grants that the city is going to be able to use towards our housing element and funding that planning process. So yes, I think the city's goal is to keep moving towards infill. That's what we're hearing, infill, high-density in the downtown, eliminating the sprawl that we're seeing in the counties. So I do understand that it sounds scary to take these numbers into the city. But as we've talked about, it really is a planning effort. And this way, when we see these lands come up for development proposals, we'll be seeing a high-density proposal instead of a single-family proposal. So I think
Exactly right. Veronica, did you have a comment? I see your hand up.
Yeah, just one last comment. The letter has been drafted, Mayor. And currently, we're going to be sending that draft letter to our consultant and our legal counsel tomorrow. And once we get their input, we'll have the COG chair, yourself, go ahead and sign that. And we'll send it on its way to HCD and the elected officials over at the Assembly and Senate.
Thank you. Mr. Resendas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to that point, Veronica, I'm hoping that the city of San Juan Batista would consider writing a letter. It sounded like there was some interest in that. So maybe you can make mention of that to them. And again, before we leave here tonight, I would really like for, consider writing a letter. Because even though, as I said, I'm a bit of a pessimist, I think it's going to fall on deaf ears. I think it sends a very unifying message to the state, that we here are all invested in our community, and we're going to stand by what they are asking us to do. And it's been very clear that they, you know, they need housing for the residents that live here. Gentrification is happening. We're getting pushed out. It's a very sad thing to experience. And we cannot afford to buy homes in our own hometown. So I would really like for the city council to consider joining the efforts and writing those letters tonight. Thank you.
And we can also share the letter with the respective agents.
And if there's a consensus from the council, we could draft a letter through, from, through COG, if that works with the council. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do have a speaker on Zoom, John Robel. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
So I'd like to compliment you guys on your thoughts and thoughtfulness on the future planning for our community. I think you guys are going in a really good, positive direction. But I have some so my, my curiosity is, how does this whole process fit in with a general consensus in the community, that the growth is already at unacceptable levels, when, when they're, they're calling for double, more than double what we've already done? I, I find this to be appalling. Yeah. So the other question is, where's the Band-Aid for increased jobs to support the number of new community residents? We can't, we can't have this many more people without this many more jobs. And certainly, if we expect those jobs to be in San Jose, then where's the infrastructure that's going to support the those jobs need to happen here, and that infrastructure, not only the, the, our travelways, our schools, our water system, all of it? Where's the infrastructure going to come from to support this new influx of people based on this higher-density residential growth in our community? It's, yeah. So where's the support from the state to develop this additional infrastructure? And, and where's the pushback from our government, and all of the governments of the state, back to the states, saying, we can't do this? I mean, I, I appreciate that we want to, but can we really do this? Is this something that we can just keep doing? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any speakers?
There are no more speakers on Zoom or in person?
Thank you. And thank you for the comments. And I, I could say, and I do want to say, one of the great things we've done in this past year was really, as a council, as I said earlier, we focus as a team. We do have many, many new jobs coming to the airport area as more industry is interested in our community. As we've shown, we have areas here that have the infrastructure. We can move quickly if they have the plans to, are ready for submission. So we're, we're doing good on that front. It's unfortunate, the state doesn't seem to care, what we think. There are communities across the state that are getting to the point of suing the state over some of these mandates. But the key for us, again, as I said, is planning and working together as a community, understanding that we can't just keep doing the same things as was happening in the past. Just approving massive developments of single-family homes for a few to gain, and the rest of us suffer is not the answer. So we, we are working on it through all the different agencies now. And it's, it's good to see the shift on better planning, better, better focus. So the council, there was a comment about, is there a consensus to draft a letter as being, as being drafted at COG, and was drafted from the county to show our unhappiness about some of the mandates? I'll say again, very likely HCD will kick that out. But that's okay. I think it's important that we, we do send a message, as Mr. Resendas mentioned earlier. Is there a consensus for that?
I support it, Mayor. Tim Burns.
Thank you. Sir Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we can send that.
Okay. Ms. Morales?
So to clarify, the letter would just say, we don't like the numbers that are being issued?
Well, it addressed the concerns we have in the community, infrastructure issues, growth issues, gentrification, all the problems that we have, transportation, travel, roads. Just point out the, the problems we do have, and the importance of our prime farmland, farmland and rangeland to a rural community. And we have to work with the state for better, the better planning, rather than just forcing, trying to force more growth. Again, do want to make clear, I know sometimes, and in the past, this has happened, where took these numbers, Rena numbers, and use this as a reason to approve more homes. It does not mean we have to approve these homes. It just means we have to have a set aside a plan in case it were to happen. So by better planning on our part, and really pushing for the higher density, it really can work in our favor to, again, build a better community. So that's what the letter would be illustrating to HCD.
I would like the council to consider if I would like the council to consider if, if the state is asking for these numbers, that the state also consider adding the San Juan County, San Juan and the City of Hollister on the infrastructure that pays for a lot of the work, the roads, green airports. And it is, it is the money that is allocated to address a lot of these issues for our infrastructure. So I would, I would be in agreement with the letter. And that specific language is incorporated for the state to consider and prioritize our region to be able to, to receive some of these funds for these projects.
Right, and that's what COG has been doing, working with the state, trying to get more funding. At this point, all of these projects on our own, but we're hoping to get some grants to help offset some of the costs. Highway 25, for example, is an over, over $300 million project. So we're trying to get the state to help with some of these costs. So yes, absolutely.
If I may, I was, my only hesitation was I, I'd like to see the letter before, before I know what I'm endorsing. Thank you.
Yeah, we get a draft to everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Very quickly, and I, I just wanted to point out to Eva, I didn't know that you were working on that as far as. You can get that before the council or the G-PAC ASAP. And again, thank you for all your hard work. I know it was probably a little bit intimidating knowing where the public is and where the public officials are with it, but you've done a fantastic job, and thank you for, for looking and thinking outside the box.
Thank you. All right, at this point, let's go ahead and move on to item G4.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez and City Council. Tina Garza, Recreation Services Manager. I'll give a brief report on the newly installed nine-hole disc golf course at Vista Park Hill. And staff recommends that council receive report and provide direction to staff. Last Tuesday, December 7th, staff met with Growing Hearts Executive Director, Rob Rodriguez, and we walked the nine-disc golf course. And the golf course does have beautiful views of Hollister, great exercise opportunities. A few improvements were noticed and that need to be established, and that was the signage to include rules and etiquette of the game. And that, some of those signage proposals were included in the packet. And I also included some pictures of the, the golf course, the buckets that are used. I'm not sure if I'm using the right terminology, but we'll bring Rob up here, and he can provide more information. But these were installed. And what we have here is these, these, we're, we're, we're just going to call them buckets for right now, are installed. The bottom part is cemented in. They did have a contractor come in and help install along with volunteers, Rob and, Rob Rodriguez, C.R. Gonzalez, who are here to answer additional questions, if there are any. But that was the few things that staff noticed that just need to be added to this golf course. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Not necessarily questions, but I do, I do have some comments. So before sitting on the council, I was a bit of a community organizer slash activist. And I've done things like this before. I have, I look at things from a different lens now that I'm sitting up here. So I can appreciate what was done, but on the other city, in a, in a huge liability situation. So I think the city, and especially our Parks and Rec staff, is very approachable. I would just caution that next time, because we don't want every member of the community or every organization to go out there and to take, doing these types of projects upon themselves without consulting with us first. So I think this is a huge win, and it's a big success. It's my understanding that this is something that was talked about before in the past. So I, I completely support it, but I would just caution and ask that if anybody ever is out there considering doing something like this, to please come and speak to the city before taking.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council?
My only comment would be, when is your first contest? Tournament? Let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I want to say thank you to the, the group here. As Mr. Resentas said, this, this actually was brought up a few years back. There wasn't support for it at the time. As I said here earlier, this council has really been focused on bringing some great stuff and open-minded to all these different ideas. And I do agree with Mr. Resentas, we, we didn't. And again, this council really is looking forward to hearing new ideas and excited about them. Here's what I would add to this. If this same group can go back, approach the county, because one of the conversations at the time was to do one of these at Park Hill and at the new park along the high school there, the new county regional park. That was going to be the second course, a bigger course. So if this group can go back, have that conversation, because I think at this point, you have a group of county supervisors that are also very open-minded and look. This is in our community, and I'm really looking forward to hearing the results from that because I think it should be and will be a go. And again, this is just, these are items that bring more people to our community and give our residents a, a chance to have some fun. So hope you guys can make that happen. Looking forward to hearing, hearing back on that. Any other comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, the first speaker is Rob Rodriguez.
Hello, council. Thank you for, it sounds like you guys support the course, so I, I really appreciate that. While I am, was one of the participants who, volunteers who showed up to install the course. Our, our organization's logo is put on the, the signs that are included in your packet. I'm the executive director for Growing Hearts Garden Center. We, Growing Hearts was not directly responsible for installing the course. We did adopt the park, though, and so we adopted the park and the surrounding area. So we are responsible for organizing cleanups and such, and we would like to do so for the course and, and continue for the park until we get a chance to form a disc golf club here in, in town. Most disc golf courses are supported by a club, which would be a 501(c)(3) that, that gets together to raise funds. Local businesses donate to get, to sponsor the signs on the course. And volunteers all show up to, to clean and, and make sure that, you know, everything is safe and, and, you know, orderly. And so I, I, we're excited. We're working on forming that club right now, but until it is, until it's formed, our organization is okay with taking that responsibility of, of managing the course. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have C.R. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. My name is C.R. Gonzalez, and I'm here to speak about the disc golf course. The disc golf, disc golf is a fastest-growing sport in the world right now. It's also one of the top amenities that parks departments are adding to their communities. There's currently 6,600 golf courses in the United States, 500 in California, and 33 within 50 miles of Hollister. Currently, there are three new courses going in, one in Marina, one in Salinas, and one in Gilroy. There's many benefits to having a course, getting outside, fresh air, fun way to exercise. It's played by all ages and abilities. It's very easy to learn and inexpensive, which opens it up to all economic classes. It's environmentally friendly. In many areas, it's shown to move the bad influences out of the park. That's been proven in, in other parks or other golf courses in the area. In the few weeks that it has been installed, we've seen people come from out of, out of the area to play. Those folks, when they come, will spend their money here. So we're, we're looking forward to helping our businesses. Safety was very important, so we brought in a professional disc golf designer from the Bay Area to help us with the course design. A lot of thought was put into each hole so that there are no blind throws that will hit other people in the park. It wasn't, those holes are designed so that it doesn't endanger any other users or other golfers. Rubber pads were put in for better footing on the tee pads. The first thing that needs to happen is signage so that we can let people know that there is a disc golf course there, and it needs to be in English and Spanish so that, throughout the park. Also, etiquette and rules for the game should be posted also, which we will definitely work on with the city. This adds even more safety to the course with the signage. We have, we had a lot of volunteers come out and help us. We had over $4,000 donated by private citizens to make this happen, which is, shows the support that we can get for this course. And, and there's been no physical or no fiscal impact on the city for this. A few years ago, we started a, a Facebook page to promote disc golf in this area, and we are currently trying to get together a formal club which will take over the management of the course. I invite any of you to check out our Facebook page, and it's called San Benito County Disc Golf Club. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker we have is on Zoom, Robin Pollard. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello. You can hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I want to thank the mayor because you really did inspire us to do the course when you gave the speech about not waiting for the feds or the state to help us with the River Parkway. And it kind of gave us like, you know, idea. So the reason that I supported putting the baskets in is because the guy that's living in the bowl for the last two years has been allowed to build structures and tear apart trailers, and, and nobody seemed to, you know, step up. And so I thought, well, if people are walking the hill and with their only, only charge is to pick up a couple pieces of trash, it's already so much cleaner from just the few people that have gone up there. I really am. Accepting this gift for the City of Hollister. So I, I want to thank you, and once those trails are in and you can get from tee to tee, it's going to be a whole lot of fun. And we promise not to, to build the slide without talking to you first. All right, have a good night.
Thank you, and don't forget the county one.
Well, no, the county is, the county is in, is on.
We'll talk about that some other time. Thank you.
Phase three. All right. Bye-bye.
The next speaker we have is Anita Kane. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Yes, I'm so glad to see this, and, and I'm hoping that the city will accept and approve the Frisbee Golf Course in the spirit that it was built, which was as a public benefit. It's such a great way for folks to get outdoors and exercise and get the views, and it's a wonderful improvement on Park Hill. So we should all be grateful to them for doing this. Thank you.
Next speaker we have is John Robel. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
So even though this group may have sidestepped the oversight of the city council just a little in establishing this disc golf course, I want to say thank you very much to this group for putting the energy and effort into making it happen. And I think it's a, a great boon to our community and maybe even the surrounding communities as their disc golf folks want to come and, and spend a little time in Hollister. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. What direction do you need on this?
Anything that you guys are, that the council is recommending?
To accept it? As a formal Hollister Disc Golf Course?
Yeah, Mayor, just a formal acceptance would be good.
Okay, is there a consensus from council?
Mayor, I have a question first, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I too would always encourage people to, it's always better to ask for permission than forgiveness. This is great. I'm absolutely jazzed by this. I actually think that it's something I might even be able to do. Having said that, Tina, one of the things that came up in one of the call-in speakers was talking about the trails. What work needs to be done on the trails to get from basket to basket?
What we've witnessed or viewed up there is, right now, the, the trail leading is kind of filled with weeds, high grass. So maybe mowing that down some. But I think part of the competition, if you guys want to come up and, and speak on it, part of the competition is having some of those, the, the trees in the way to kind of get around and see how, how they can get the disc inside the basket. But what, what I feel that needs to be done is the grass area. It, it is tall grass. I would be concerned if our tourists attending there ticks in the grass, you know, that type of rodents in the area. But from my understanding, some of that is a part of the game, the competition of the game.
Okay, and, and so for the things that aren't a part of the competition, I presume we have the resources and the staff to do the work to, to clear the area to make it safe?
Not at this time. We, I actually sat in on a webinar for another grant. It's a, it's a trail through the State Parks and Recreation Department. So we're kind of looking at a grant, applying for it. We're just having to get a little bit more information on, if awarded, what is our, how much would the city have to invest? Or is it a fully awarded grant? I'm just not clear with some of those things at this point, and we have another webinar coming up in January.
Okay. I, I would ask maybe the city manager consider a mid-year budget adjustment to provide the resources necessary to deal with whatever the trail issues are to ensure a safe and enjoyable experience. And then, follow-up, Tina, I heard you talk about signage that needs to be installed. And, and again, I'm going to go back to the dollars. Do we have the current budget to provide those signs to, to bring this to completion? I, I think these people did an amazing job, but I, I don't see why, as, as a community, if we're going to benefit, that they need to out-of-pocket those expenses. And, and I would like to see them done consistently in a professional way, and, and I think we should pay for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, yeah, we have a sign-making machine. I'll work with Public Works. We can make the signs in English and Spanish, and then we'll work with the Public Works staff also to see what we can do to clean up the pass.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
That we have.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I had a comment.
Councilmember Morales, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say thank you for spending your evening with us, your comments, your time, and all of your work and energy is very much valued and appreciated. So thank you very much for, for being with his, with us here tonight.
Thank you. So I think.
C.R. Gonzalez just has a, a comment, if it's okay by council?
Well, we're closed, but let's, I would say this. Having a rough, the rough, it's just like regular golf. Rough is important in these, in these courses, just like sand traps and different obstacles. So that'll give you good direction. These guys are obviously very knowledgeable about what. These guys are obviously very knowledgeable about what can be done or what should be done. And let's take their lead. They, they know what they're talking about. Just work with them on what they'd like to see done. And as the city manager said, we have our own sign-making equipment. We can take care of those things for them. Just, let's get it going. That's a consensus from council.
Yes.
Thank. Thank you, Tina. We're going to now move to item G5.
Good evening, I'm Tina Garza. I have a report from the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Dog Park Ad Hoc Committee. That committee has been meeting since August of 2021. And on, in, at our June PRC meeting, Chair Graziano assigned herself and Chair Coyston to the, the Dog Park Ad Hoc Committee. And what has come about throughout the last few months that we've been meeting is we have, we were able to design three shade structures. And Ms. Sandy Gabe has funded those shade structures. And, and also another outcome from our ad hoc committee is a Dog Park etiquette class to be offered by the Peacekeeper Canine Services, and this is free to the public. Will be offered twice a month, and residents will be able to register the, the recrea, through the Recreation Department. And there will be a max of 15 participants in each class. Age group is actually eight years and older, so I was, at first I had some concerns about the age, but she feels that, our instructor feels that, that that age is appropriate to work with our, our young children on dog etiquette and what humans need to know or be aware of at the dog park. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
In the packet, I did provide the area, the map of where we're looking at placing the umbrellas, the different colors, and in the very back page, or towards the back of the page, there is kind of the, the, what is it called? I forget what it's called. Just the sun blockage and how, what, how the umbrellas will protect our residents from being exposed to the sun.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Perez.
So the, for these canopies, did you, did anyone go out and talk to the people that are using the dog park? Is it something that they're all asking for, or a lot of them are asking for?
Quite a bit of our community is asking for these shade structures. And we did invite, at our ad hoc committee meeting, we did invite our community, and we probably had on average eight to 10 community members that attended. So that they were able to give some input on, on what they wanted. In regards to the placement, we did work, the placement of the umbrellas, we did work with our airport staff because where you see umbrella number three, we actually had it towards the fence over on the west side. But when we spoke with Adam, it was mentioned that we couldn't have anything taller than the fence line over there, and these umbrellas stand around 14 feet tall. So we ended up moving some of the, the shade structures.
Awesome. One last question about the dog park. Did we get the last faucet fixed?
Yes, that, that has, has been fixed, and it's open, and the only time it's muddy paws is when it rains.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great, excellent. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina, real quick, back to the umbrellas. I presume they're commercial grade and they're tethered so that they can withstand any wind shear that could launch them?
Yes, they are. In, in the report, it does state, are, there's a form that says they can withstand, you know, up to 100 and, 104, I think, miles per hour wind. So they're, they're great structures. We did meet with the vendor and had that discussion because we felt out of the airport, it does get windy.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions, comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Tina, I do have one more comment for you.
Yes.
Great success over there. Again, another great example of teamwork. For the future, some of the other parks that we have, you know, people do walk their dogs. Is there a chance we could start putting fountains that can, drinking fountains for the dogs also on some of the other parks?
Yes, we'll look into that. The new park that will be developing over by Fire Station Two will have that, yes.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Is there a consensus to go ahead and move forward with this from the council?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much, Tina.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item G6. Planning Commissioner for District Four.
So, yes, this item is requesting that Councilmember Burns make a nomination for the Planning Commission District Four vacancy, and that council either ratify that appointment or direct staff to continue to accept applications. We currently have three qualified applicants which are listed on the agenda, and the applications were included in the packet.
Mr. Burns, you have a decision?
Oh, I do. I, I wanted the suspense and drama though, Mayor.
You had that because I couldn't see, so I was thinking, what is going on over there?
Silence. It's definitely sometimes. So Mayor and City Council, I, first of all, I want to thank the three applicants for their time and willingness to serve. I do believe that volunteers make a city what it is, and we have an amazing city, so that would suggest that we have some amazing volunteers, and I know that to be true. So I'm going to recommend that this council ratify the appointment of Luke Corona to the Planning Commission. Mr. Corona has lived in Hollister for a little over 20 years. He lives in Sunny Slip Village. He is married for 22 years. He has two young adults that have grown up in Hollister, and so he's spent a lot of time with his kids here. He also works for the County of Santa Clara, Santa Clara County, for 17 years in the Roads and Airport Division, and he's also got a construction background. And I think he'll be an amazing addition to our Planning Commission. And so I'm very pleased and proud to recommend him to council for their consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Congratulations, Mr. Corona.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers and no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there a consensus?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Corona. We will now move to item G7, the committee assignments. All right, well, first off, thank you to all the council members that did contact me with your, your requests. I do appreciate it, and I'm really glad to hear you guys all really enjoyed your committees from last year, so it makes that team, we keep talking about, keep going. You guys are really, got a good handle on these things, so it's exciting. So these are my requests for this year. We'll start with COG. COG, we will stay the same, myself and Mr. Resendez on that committee. LAFCO will stay the same because that's a intergovernmental. Nova, let me know if I'm going too fast, by the way.
I think my list is got a slightly different order, unless members of the COG do Measure A, local transit, airport, land.
Let me, let me check what your list is here. Hang on, I had the other list. I printed out. Sorry for that. Okay, so first page was COG, correct? You had that?
Yes. And then right below that, it says members of COG also sit on the following boards, so
Yeah, those are same members.
Okay.
Okay?
Got it.
LAFCO will stay the same. Now we'll move to the next page. Intergovernmental will stay the same. Fire protection will stay the same. Ambag I'll replace myself as alternate with Ms. Morales. Next page. Like to appoint Ms. Morales as the alternate. Mr. Perez will stay.
That was the Governance Committee?
It's the Governance, yes.
I, I would like to give up. The only ones I'd really like to keep are my senior advisory agency, Integrated Waste, and Ambag.
I'm sorry, Mr. Perez, say it again.
I would like to, the only ones I'd like to keep is my senior advisory ag, the AAA, the Integrated Waste, and Ambag, and I can be alternative on, as, as any of the ones you want me to be.
On the Governance, would you like, would you rather be the alternate on that and Ms. Morales can be the member?
Sure.
That's good. Okay, Ms. Morales as the member, and Mr. Perez for pointing that out. Did you get that, Nova?
Yes, I got that.
Thank you. Water resource would stay the same. Paharo River Wash, Watershed would stay the same.
Who's the alternate on that?
That is, Mr. Burns and Mr. Miller are the two members of that.
Mayor Velazquez, I'd be happy to yield my alternate status to that to any other council member that may have interest.
Of the Paharo? Ms. Morales, would you like to be the member on that? I'm, I can't hear, I'm sorry.
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burns, would you be willing to stay on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the next page, starting with San Benito County Integrated Waste. Mr. Perez, you made a comment. You do want to stay on this one, you said?
Correct.
Okay, so you would stay on that, and then Ms. Morales, you could be the alternate on it? Monterey Bay Area Resource District. I'm not seeing the current member. Who's the current? Last member is District Three. I'm, I see it now. This is the Monterey Bay Resource District. So Councilmember Morales?
That's final. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to the Successory Agency. That would stay the same. Oversight Committee for Former Redevelopment Agency, that would stay the same. Senior Advisory. Mr. Perez, you said you did want to stay with this one, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And any of my agencies that I'm with, if anyone wants to, would like some, please feel free to speak up. I know, Tim, you probably got a laundry list of ones you want to participate in. Just, just saying, bro.
Ms. Morales, you'd be the alternate on that? Central Coast Community Energy would be Ms. Morales.
Would there be an alternate for that one?
We'll go now. Did you get those, Nova?
For three CE, I have Councilmember Morales as the representative, but is there going to be an alternate for that?
Mr. Perez will say as the alternate.
Okay.
Roland's actually the alternate right now.
Has he listed as the alternate right now? Is he?
No, Roland is. That's, that's what this one says.
On the three CE?
Yep.
The paperwork I have shows Mr. Perez as alternate. I will
The one on the tablet is Roland.
Oh.
Looks like one list has Roland and one list has Rick, so there's some confusion there. Does anyone remember?
Mr. Perez, do you mind being the alternate? You had some experience on there before, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Let's have Mr. Perez, he had some experience on there before. We'll go down next to the next page, the Ad Hoc Committees. General Plan stays the same. It's, it's, the plan's done now. It's just needing voting from all of us. EDC would stay the same. Fire Ad Hoc Committee would stay the same. Charter City Council Term Limits would stay the same. Police Department Communication Center, Mr. Burns. And Mr. Resendez, that would stay the same. Community Befication would stay the same. Administrative Services, Mr. Resendez. Airport, Ms. Morales. Community Services, myself. Development Services, Mr. Burns. Fire, Mr. Burns. Informational Systems, myself. Police, Mr. Burns. And Recreation. And I believe that covers them all.
The video, the video cut out on the recreation, is that staying the same?
Yeah, Mr. Perez.
Okay, thanks.
I just have one, I have one comment.
Go ahead, sir.
There's a lot of different committees and ad hocks and and council department liaisons, and I don't know, I just, I know because I try to attend as many meetings as possible. It's a headache. It's a hassle. But they're really awesome, and at the same time, you know, it, it's, takes a lot out of your day, especially when you run your own small company. So I can imagine what it's like to run a bigger company, and I would like to see that these appointments be spread out more evenly, because Ignacio, Mayor, you, you take on a lot, and I'd like to see things spread out more evenly.
I don't, I don't mind giving up another one of mine. Please, make a recommendation.
Oh, no, no.
If you'd like another one of these?
No, I'm just saying that if any of the other council members want to step up to the plate No, I'm just saying that uh, if any of the other council members uh want to step up to the plate because I know what it's like to have to, I, I'm not, I don't have, I'm, I don't work for a company where I can get sick pay or uh leave of absence or for union or any, any of these things. So when I, when I don't go to a job, I lose out. And I just, I'm, I'm thinking of the fairness of everybody, the equity of everybody. And um I see your name on there a lot. I'm not saying I want to take them. But I just, you know what? It's uh some equity for everybody, I think would be really nice.
That's again perfectly fine with me. I have two spots on there, those spots. Please feel free to uh take those. That'd be for Community Services and Information Systems.
No. You want it slow.
Okay, so we'll stay with them the way they are. All right, that is all of them, correct, Nova? Okay, is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, there's a consensus. Hang on a second, I lost my place here. All right, HIJK, there's no business. Want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe, take care, take precautions out there, this virus is spreading. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez? Councilmember Resendez?
He went to sleep.
He's on mute here. Mr. Resendez, you there?
There he is. Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Now you can.
I apologize. My microphone's gone out about five times tonight. I'm here and yes.
Uh, Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Uh, council adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Merry Christmas.
Recording stopped.